Okay, I call to order the third night of the annual town meeting of the Town of Arlington. Okay, first announcement, the water fountain in the town hall lobby is not working at the moment. Apologies for that. There is a fountain on the second floor and in the town hall annexed by the office of the Planning Department. We expect the lobby fountain to be fixed by Wednesday night. We apologize for the inconvenience. Also, when the meeting takes electronic votes going forward, I'm going to try to remember to read a description of what we're voting on before we even open voting, because sometimes it's a race for me to finish that before the clock expires. So hopefully that gives folks a little bit more time to understand what we're voting on. Of course, when I give those summaries, it's often not the full vote language, because sometimes that's pretty lengthy and I'm not going to recite it all. You have all that information available to you in print form and online, but just a summary of what you're about to vote on. And let's see. Lastly, we have a note on the quality of the audio in the balcony. We're working on improving the sound quality from the speakers there. Sometimes between meetings, the equipment needs to be taken down and set back up again, making it hard to improve or even keep the quality consistent from night to night. So we're doing what we can and ask for your forbearance while we work through those issues. And keep the feedback coming if you see like improvements or issues up there. Thank you. And without further ado, please rise for the National Anthem. Ms. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It is moved that if all the business of the meeting is set forth in the warrant for the annual town meeting is not disposed of after session. When the meeting adjourns, it adjourns to Wednesday, May 7, 2025, at 8:00 p.m.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, all those in favor of reconvening on Wednesday, May 7, at 8:00 p.m., if we don't finish tonight, say yes. All those opposed say no. It is unanimous. And next, we'll take a test question. I think we're bringing up the test question now. While we're waiting for that, Ms. Dre, did you have a point of order? Oh, we'll get to announcements. Yeah, thank you. Okay, and the test question is true or false. The two most common vote quanta at town meeting are 50% and 2/3. Vote quantum or quantum of vote is the vote ratio required to pass a measure. One for true, two for false. It should say and, 2/3. Okay, let's settle down. Let's settle down. Okay, let's close voting. And the motion passes, 128 to 50, but that is incorrect. It's incorrect. The two most common vote quanta at town meeting are majority and 2/3. If it's 100 votes in the affirmative, and let's scroll through the screens. And while that's scrolling through, I'll explain. If the vote is 100 in favor and 100 in opposition, the motion fails. Majority is at least, is the least amount that is greater than 50%. Whereas 2/3, if it's 100 in favor and 50 against, then that passes. Having exactly 2/3 passes, having exactly 50% on a majority vote fails. And there's actually other vote quanta, but we rarely encounter them, 4 fifths and 9 tenths, which are related to, I still have to fill more time here, related to appropriations to pay debts from past years. It's 4 fifths for an annual town meeting, 9 tenths for a special town meeting. Now you know. Okay, we all the way through? Good. Take now announcements and resolutions. Ms. Dre?
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Dre. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 10 and the director of the Arlington Teosinte Sister City Project. And I'm here tonight to give you just a quick review of what we've been up to this last year. El Salvador has been in the news a lot recently, unfortunately not in a good way. Salvadorans have been watching their nascent democracies slip away, and there are cautionary tale of what lies before us. Their dictator president is serving an unconstitutional second term, has firm control over the legislative and judicial branches, and since March 2023, has disappeared 85,000 people, many innocent to black prison holes with no due process. But I'm not here to talk about that. I'm here to talk about the hope and the light of Arlington's amazing 37-year friendship with the village of Teosinte, a small village of about 350 people, incredibly resilient and determined farmers, teachers, builders, parents, and young people. Teosinte is a small village nestled in the mountains of eastern El Salvador. It has a beautiful church, a three-room schoolhouse, a medical clinic, a newly-built community room, a soccer field, of course, and a river that runs right through the village. Surrounding the homes terraced into the mountains are their crop fields, where they grow rice and beans and corn to feed their families. Teosinte continues to prioritize education and leadership skills for their youth and is continuing to search for a permanent clean water source. Currently, their pipes are contaminated by Ecoli and lead, and they have been unable to buy a clean source of water spring. They have recently paved several stretches of the main dirt road to make it passable in the rainy season and to make the houses less dusty in the dry season. The community is looking for funding to build a small playground where families with young children can gather and socialize. In Arlington, we also focus on education, both of the community around issues of immigration and of our students through a vibrant curriculum that starts in the second grade in all of our public schools and continues into high school through the World Languages Department and the Language Clubs. As we talk to both students and adults, we strive to show that the similarities between our two communities, our hopes and our fears, are what unite us more than the differences divide us. Through craft and coffee sales like tonight, we support local businesses in and around Teosinte. The women there make the products that we sell and therefore are able to have income. 100% of all the money that we raise is returned to the community. We do not keep a single penny, and it's used by the community for educational scholarships and community development projects. This fall, we're fortunate to be hosting a speaking tour of some of our friends from El Salvador who will visit our high school and speak to hundreds of our high schoolers about the importance of knowing our history, resilience, and community organizing. We are a completely volunteer-run organization, and we welcome your support as an occasional volunteer, as a board member, or a donor. Tonight, you can support us by visiting our craft, coffee, and bake sale during the break. We will also be back on May 14. And if you love our coffee, as many people do, you can join our coffee club and have it delivered to you every month. So thank you so much. We have a website, arlingtonteosinte.com, and you guys can always find me. I'd be happy to talk your ears off about this incredible relationship that we have. Bueno, muchas gracias for everything and have a great evening. Let's get it done.
Thank you, Ms. Dre. Now, continuing that theme, actually, I have an announcement as well. I could have mentioned this earlier, but I'll mention it now. Tonight apparently is a big Sister City night at Arlington Town Hall because tonight we're honored to have several students, their chaperones, and a city official visiting us from our sister city, Naga Okakio, Japan, in the gallery. So please welcome me in, joining them, or, I mean, welcome me in. Thank you. Great, thank you. Thank you for joining us tonight. Let's see, are there any other announcements or resolutions tonight? Okay, seeing none, are there reports to be received tonight? There are. Ms. Deschler?
Christine Deschler, Chair of the Finance Committee. I move that Article 3 be taken from the table.
Okay, we have a second to, an emotion and a second to take Article 3 from the table to receive reports of committees. All those in favor say yes. All those opposed say no. It is an affirmative vote.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the supplemental report of the Arlington Finance Committee as published on the town website be received.
Okay, we have a second for the second supplemental report of the Finance Committee, and we have a second. All those in favor of receiving the second supplemental Finance Committee report to town meeting say yes. All those opposed say no. It is unanimous. So just to be clear, any recommended votes contained in the supplemental, in the latest supplemental report will supersede any recommended votes for those articles that may have appeared in prior reports from the Finance Committee. Do we have any other reports to be issued tonight? Ms. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the revised supplemental report to town meeting from the Select Board be received.
Okay, we have a second to receive the, and a motion to receive the supplemental report from the Select Board. All those in favor say yes. All those opposed say no. It is unanimous. So again, any recommended votes listed in there for articles that also appeared with recommended votes in prior versions of the Select Board's reports are superseded by the latest version. Any other reports of committees? Ms. Gruber? And Mr. Bagnall?
Thank you, Mr. Christiana. Rebecca Gruber, Precinct 10. I move that the report of the Hybrid Town Meeting Study Committee be received as published on the town website.
Okay, we have a second. We have a motion and a second to receive the report of the Hybrid Town Meeting Study Committee. All those in favor say yes. All those opposed say no. It is unanimous. And did you have a presentation you wanted to?
Yes, Mr. Christiana.
Okay, can we bring a presentation?
A brief presentation.
This is the Hybrid Town Meeting Study Committee presentation.
I myself as co-chair along with Alex Bagnall, we would like to give you a very brief summary of the report that you can find under Reports. As you might recall, our committee was established per vote of spring 2023 special town meeting. Sorry.
Speak, point to the microphone, please.
Better? You can find our full report, as I've said, online. I hope you will take a look at it or at least the two-page executive summary at the beginning of the report. Do we have slides? Yes?
They're working on it.
Oh, should we wait or should I proceed?
Can you scroll down to the reports on the town meeting page? Oh, on the page that you have of the presentations?
Okay, well, let me proceed. So we had several areas of investigation. You might recall participating in a survey last spring. Generally speaking, there was broad support for the hybrid town meeting option from the survey respondents, but as you might expect, hesitancy and concerns about technology and also the loss of, potential loss of collegiality. We also investigated the experience of other towns that are using hybrid town meeting, in particular Belmont and Lexington. They have found about 25% of their town meeting members participate remotely on any given night, and they also note additional complexity in operating and additional resources required. We also investigated the legal landscape. There are multiple state bills in process regarding hybrid town meeting. Our largest question outstanding is whether this will be required of us versus just being allowed by the state to hold hybrid town meeting. We looked at technology requirements. As you might imagine, given our experience of this week and last, we would need investments in town hall audiovisual technology. We would probably need updates to our electronic voting platform, and we would probably require additional support staff. In addition, we considered some potential procedural changes that might include voting, how the speaker queue is managed, and how member motions are recognized.
In short, yes, we think that the advantages outweigh the disadvantages and that we should pursue the possibility of hybrid town meeting, primarily for accessibility reasons, both for the physical challenges of this here town hall and also for the geographic challenges of members needing to be in the same place two nights a week that is not their home. In general, there is community desire for the hybrid format, though admittedly it was not unanimous, recognizing the possible state requirement or at least allowing for it. Next steps will include a new electronic voting contract. That's coming up for review that will allow for the technology for remote voting. In addition, we are recommending some investment, both in audiovisual and technical improvements that would also benefit people sitting here in the hall with good audibility, and also a staffing review to note that the town should have a formalized AV support capability and perhaps acknowledge the relationship with ACMI. And finally, we'd like to thank all the committee members and Julie Brazil, the town clerk, Greg Christiana, the town moderator, and Sayed Kodeyir, the town IT representative to our committee. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Great, thank you. And we're out of time. And I do want to point out, because I get this question often, that like, don't we already do some form of hybrid with a satellite room? And I consider that not a hybrid option because it's all onsite within the town hall complex in locations using technology that's completely managed by the town, whereas the hybrid that's contemplated by the Study Committee is for locations that are not controlled or managed by the town, people at their homes or using their own devices from other locations. Any other reports of committees? Seeing none, Ms. Deschler?
Christine Deschler, Chair of the Finance Committee. I move that Article 3 be laid upon the table.
Okay, we have a motion to lay Article 3, reports of committees on the table, and we have a second. All those in favor say yes. All those opposed say no. It is unanimous vote. Okay. So we now resume Article 7, and this will take a little bit of explaining. I'll try to be quick. So if you remember last week, when Article 7 first came up, the, there was, there were issues raised that led me to rule the main motion, the recommended vote of the Select Board on Article 7, out of scope. And that effectively nullifies that main motion and any subsidiary motions stacked on top of that main motion or subsidiary of that main motion. So that would include the Hellmuth Amendment is also nullified as well. And so at that point, we had no main motion under that article. And there was then a motion to postpone until today, and that motion passed. And now here we are back at Article 7. And effectively, it is as if we're redoing Article 7 essentially from scratch because now we have a new vote coming from the Select Board. So I introduce Ms. Mahan, I think, is going to introduce the new recommended vote from the Select Board for Article 7. Point of order? So that's a great question. I don't even know if we have the speaker queue from that night, but also the subject matter is very likely to change as a result of the change in votes. And it'll get even more interesting than that in a moment after Ms. Mahan introduces, which I'll explain after Ms. Mahan introduces the recommended vote from the Select Board, but thanks for the question.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The board voted unanimously on Article 7 to recommend favorable action on this article to establish the Energy and Efficiency Electrification Revolving Fund. If approved, this fund would allow the town to implement more energy and electrification initiatives throughout the year, and we could possibly receive state and federal reimbursements directly for projects that have previously received your approval, town meeting's approval. And as we stated before, it is expected the fund will be used to defray allowable costs and that any expenditure from the fund that exceeds $50,000, the capital planning, I apologize, Chris, Mr. Moore, the Capital Planning Committee will be required to authorize any expenditure above $50,000. If I could ask Mr. Feeney to also give a brief description on this revision.
Great, thank you. Ms. Feeney?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, town meeting. So last week, there was clearly some confusion surrounding the vote language included for Article 7. This confusion ultimately led to the identification of an underlying issue with the town's bylaw regarding revolving funds. That is, that Title 1, Article 22, had a previously approved Section 5 from the 2017 annual town meeting that had been overlooked and not incorporated into our bylaws, despite being in full force and effect. Instead of proposing a new Section 5 as before, this article now seeks to amend the previously omitted Section 5, which clearly documents the town's authorized revolving funds and their allowable uses per the Municipal Modernization Act of 2016. In the Select Board's supplemental report to town meeting, you will now find a table that lists the new Energy Efficiency and Electrification Revolving Fund with the list of receipts and expenditures being clearly consistent with the language of the warrant article. Last week, Town Meeting heard from our Sustainability Manager, Talia Fox, about the potential benefits and uses of this new revolving fund. These all still ring true, including providing timely matching for grant opportunities that present in the midst of the fiscal year as well as for offsetting the upfront costs of certain projects or purchases identified in the capital budget. My thanks to Ms. Fox for her work in getting Arlington designated as a climate leader community. As announced by the Healey administration on Friday, Arlington is one of only 19 communities receiving this designation, and we are now eligible for additional grants to meet our municipal energy goals. This revolving fund will further our ability to take the lead on climate-related initiatives. Of course, like with all revolving funds, Town Meeting would receive a report on fund activity each year and vote each year on the annual expenditure cap of the fund. Unique to this revolving fund, as Ms. Mahan noted, is a proposed restriction requiring the Capital Planning Committee to authorize any expenditures in excess of $50,000. Here too, Town Meeting would also vote to approve the Capital Planning Committee's budget each fiscal year, which would incorporate offsets from this fund into the other column as a new funding source. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. And before, and the reason why I haven't gone to the speaker queue is that I had a request for motion, and so I think this person will be able to explain more, and I can clarify if there's more clarification needed. So I now recognize Paul Bear, who I believe is in the balcony, who reached out to me with the desire to make a motion for a postponement. So, Mr. Bear, do you want to introduce your motion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that we postpone this article till next Monday. I'm sorry to ask you that, but there are three reasons why I'm proposing that. One is that since this just came out on Friday, and we're in the board meeting, we haven't had a lot of time to look at it. Secondly, you could not propose an amendment on it because the rule for proposing amendments at a Monday town meeting is that the amendment has to be delivered to the moderator. And now I'm not going to court by Thursday evening, and since the motion didn't exist Thursday evening, there was no way to propose an amendment. And the third reason is this, since this is a markedly different kind of revolving fund than any of the other revolving funds in the county. I believe as kind of the Finance Committee, that the Finance Committee should at least have a chance to look at it, discuss it, and make any recommendations in the meantime. And the Finance Committee will be meeting Wednesday evening before the company, and this is on the agenda. Because I propose, I move that we postpone until next Monday. I propose Monday, it's Wednesday, because Wednesday will be pretty busy with the budgets plus we won't have time for the Finance Committee to make any kind of work for the town meeting.
Okay, we have a second. We have a motion to postpone Article 7 until Monday, the 12th. Is that correct, Mr. Bear?
That is correct.
And we have a second. And so in the interest of time and because of the quirks of how Arlington Town Meeting handles debate and motions, I'm going to go straight to a vote on that motion. If the motion succeeds, then it'll be postponed until next Monday. I believe we also have, let me just double check, I believe we have the- Point of order? One sec, we'll take the point of order after I finish the statement. I believe we have the Minuteman appropriation for the Minuteman School also on the 12. It's late on the table. It doesn't have a time certain, but we do have speakers that need to be here at a certain time. So my interpretation is that we would take this after Article 55, if that's amenable to Mr. Bear.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so we'd postpone until after Article 55 or first thing on the 12th, if for whatever reason Article 55 needs to be delayed. And we had a point of order. Where is that coming from?
From the Satellite Room, Pi Fisher, Precinct 6. The Satellite Room cannot hear the balcony microphone.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
The Satellite Room is not able to hear the microphone from the balcony.
Oh, okay. Let's see, well, let's see, we'll need to get someone on that. It looks like someone just rose from over there from IT to address that. So let me clarify what just happened here. I apologize for that and apologize for this taking longer than it should. We have a motion from the balcony in the auditorium to postpone- We have a motion from the balcony in the auditorium to postpone... But, okay, but you didn't hear the entire statement. But the gist of it is that we have a motion to postpone Article Seven until next Monday after we dispose of Article Fifty-Five for reasons of there being an abbreviated timeframe and in which to provide amendments. And it was already after one of the deadlines for submitting amendments for the three options, where the town will print copies for you and have it reviewed by me for scope, that we were already past that deadline. So, because of that, and also to allow the Finance Committee to be able to weigh in. And they are meeting on this Wednesday night. And this item is on their agenda to discuss the new recommended vote for Article Seven from the Select Board. Is that a fair assessment, Mr. Bear? Okay. And so, that's the motion before us, and we have a second. And so, we're now going to vote on a motion to postpone Article Seven until Monday after Article Fifty-Five. Yes. Which is the Minuteman Budget. So, we'll do this by a voice vote. And it's a majority vote for a postponement to a time certain. All those in favor of postponing until Monday after Article Fifty-Five say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed say no?
No.
It is a majority vote. And that takes us now to Article Seventeen. I'm sorry, Article Eighteen. And let's see. Ms. Mahan, do you want to introduce this for us?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In the revised supplemental report from the Select Board, the Board voted three to one with Mr. De Corsi voting no. And Mr. Hellmeth recused himself. This is a home rule petition that we are re-filing. The proponent appeared before the Board and again stated the reasons for that. As well as previously, at Town Meeting around April 28th, there was some revised language that the Board did review and vote... Voted in favor of. So, that that revised vote language is now consistent with the language suggested by the warrant article. And I would ask that Mr. Greg Dennis further explain.
Okay. Before we take the presentation, let's show the speaker queue. So, everyone can... Okay. So, we are now going to clear the speaker queue. When you see this list go blank, the speaker queue is open. And you can start trying to request to speak. Okay. It is now open. Dr. Dennis?
Thank you. Greg Dennis, Precinct One. I was also Chair of the Election Modernization Committee at the time. It was sunset in 2022. As the Select Board report indicated, this article is one of a series of resubmissions of home rule petitions to the state legislature. If the slides look familiar, it's because they're pretty much the same ones I used four years ago when we submitted this. The main motion proposes home rule legislation to adopt ranked choice voting for elections to townwide offices. For those who weren't on Town Meeting in 2021, adopting ranked choice voting was a unanimous recommendation of the Election Modernization Committee, which Town Meeting passed that year with over eighty-four percent of the vote. To understand the benefits of ranked choice voting, let's look at a key problem in the voting system we use today. Next slide, please. That's the problem of vote splitting. So, let's say we're holding an election for favorite candy and two candidates enter the race, Reese's Peanut Butter Cups and Candy Corn. Early polling shows about sixty percent prefer Reese's to Candy Corn. So, it looks like the Peanut Butter Cups will win handily. That is, until, uh-oh, a third candidate decides to enter the race. Next slide, please. Reese's Minis. And that's bad news for Reese's fans. Now, their votes are split. Next slide, please. And on Election Day, Candy Corn wins with less than a majority, less than fifty percent of the vote, even though a majority wanted some kind of Reese's. Next slide, please. Vote splitting has a number of negative consequences for our elections today. First, as we saw in the example, it means those we elect may lack majority support. Now, while non-majority outcomes don't happen in every election, the threat of vote splitting is ever-present. And that threat causes prospective candidates to bow out of the race before it has begun. Fewer candidates means a less diverse candidate pool. It means fewer candidates drawing their voters to the polls. And some, it means campaigns are less welcoming, less inclusive, and less engaging than they could be. These are some of the problems that ranked choice voting can help fix. So, how does it work? Next slide, please. Well, here are the kinds of ballots we use in townwide elections today. Depending upon the number of seats we're filling, we may be asked to vote for up to one, or up to two, or up to three. And this motion will replace them all with a single-ranked ballot. Next slide. Where voters can choose just one candidate in the first column, or if they want, mark a second choice in the second column, a third choice in the third column, as many or as few choices as they like. And it doesn't matter how many seats we're filling, one, two, or three, the ballot and instructions stay the same. To see how the votes are counted, let's look at a Select Board race between the four candidates on this ballot, Mary, Diego, Sally, and Robbie. We start by counting just the first choices, just the marks in that first column. Next slide. Mary has thirty-six first choices, Diego twenty-four, Sally twelve, and Robbie twenty-eight. Mary's in the lead, but with ranked choice, you can't win with only thirty-six percent of the vote. Instead, the last-place candidate... Here, that Sally is dropped. Next slide, please. Everyone that voted for Sally has their vote instantly count towards their next choice instead. Next slide. Then, we continue to drop the last-place candidate and transfer their votes until only two candidates remain. When only two are left, the candidate with more than fifty percent of the vote, a majority, wins. Congratulations, Mary. Now, what if we're filling two seats on the Select Board? Well, then, Mary has won the first of those two seats. And then, we count the ballots over again from the beginning, but with Mary excluded to fill the second seat. Next slide. Here, the ballots counted over again for their first choices from the beginning, except votes for Mary count instantly towards their next choice. And again, this is the same process over again. So, we drop the last-place vote-getter. Here, that Sally again. Next slide. And once there are two left, again, the candidate with the majority of the votes... Here, that's Diego, wins the second seat. I'm happy to answer any questions about how the votes are counted. But it's important to keep in mind that the task of the voter remains simple. Next slide. Which is to fill out this ballot. And we know from experience around the country and around the world that voters can handle this. Now, my last slide. In return for using that ballot and counting the votes in this way, town elections would see a number of benefits. One, will ensure that candidates we elect have majority support. Two, by ending vote splitting, will encourage a larger and more diverse set of candidates to run. There's evidence that this benefits women and people of color in particular. Three, will help boost voter turnout because more candidates means more people pulling their friends and neighbors out to vote. Four, will limit gamesmanship because lobbying your supporters to bullet vote becomes an ineffective strategy with ranked choice. And five, candidates will have an extra incentive to stay positive and civil to pick up the second and third choices from supporters of their opponents. The text of the main motion is, in effect, the same one as I submitted or the Election Modernization Committee submitted in 2021, except I've incorporated some language clarifications that I've picked up from other ranked-choice-voting home rule petitions from around the state. I want to close by emphasizing two points. First, the Election Modernization Committee was unanimous that it would make little sense to use ranked-choice voting in only single-seat elections. That would give voters an inconsistent and unpredictable experience. For example, it would mean that in some years, the Select Board race would use ranked-choice voting. In other years, it wouldn't. Moreover, it would deny key benefits to some of our highest-profile races, where vote splitting is a serious concern. Our proposal for multi-seat elections is a straightforward application of the same single-seat method, the same process, just reapplied once for each seat to be filled. It's based on the same rationale and offers the same benefits to multi-seat elections as it does to single-seat ones. And lastly, even if both Town Meeting and the state legislature pass this home rule bill, that does not enact ranked-choice voting right away. Rather, it presents the question to the voters in the form of a ballot question. So, really, the question before Town Meeting is less about whether we want ranked-choice voting for town elections, but whether we think the voters ought to be able to decide. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And there was a Dennis amendment, but that is obsolete and doesn't need to be moved because they were essentially correcting some edits that were mistaken in the initial Select Board report under their recommended vote for this article, which have now been corrected in the supplemental Select Board report. So, there's no need for that motion that had been announced earlier. And now, we have a revised Schlickman amendment, which Mr. Schlickman will introduce. I'm sorry. Substitute motion.
Thank you. Paul Schlickman, Precinct Nine. I move the substitute motion labeled the revised Schlickman substitute.
Do we have a second? Can we have a second?
The revisions are to incorporate the changes that Mr. Dennis made in his... In the original motion, as that I used the original motion as the template for making the change. My change to this would be to remove multi-seat elections from the ranked-choice voting. And let me tell you, there are several good reasons why. First of all, as Mr. Dennis pointed out, this would have to go to a referendum. And I think that if folks really want this to pass, you're going to have to be cognizant of who the voters are out there. The median age for a voter in an Arlington town election is sixty-two years old. And so, that the voters out there who are going to be voting on this ballot question are different, both in terms of age demographics and awareness of political issues than the folks in this room.
Hold on, settle down. Let's...
Mr. Dennis is absolutely right about the benefits of ranked-choice voting in a single-seat election. Because if you go and vote, and I have a first-choice person who I want to win, I can mark them number one. And the number two would be the person who gets my second choice. And if my first-choice person doesn't win, I can move my vote along. Ranked choice on multi-seat becomes a lot more complicated. And I distributed in the warrant... In the annotated warrant, a little election, not involving candy bars, but actual characters, Bullwinkle, Rocky Squirrel, and Snidely Whiplash. So, that if you were in this theoretical election right now, under our current system, and you were electing two people in Frostbite Falls, Minnesota, you could go in and mark your ballot for both Rocket J. Squirrel and Bullwinkle J. Moose, secure in the fact that Snidely Whiplash would not get elected. And of course, you don't want Snidely Whiplash to be governing the town because he has the tendency to tie people to railway tracks. But under ranked-choice voting, you don't have that option. You're given a ballot, and you have to pick who's your number one, who's your number two, and you can go on to three. Makes it a little more complicated. So, that if you're an average voter who is taking... Who is interested enough to participate in the election, but not really savvy in knowing Rocky and Bullwinkle very well, you're going to have that ballot on your coffee table and looking at it as, well, should I do Rocky first? Or should I do Bullwinkle first? And that puzzle might lead to the fact that that ballot might end up sitting on the coffee table past Election Day. Or you'd end up in some sort of a strategic voting thing. Well, if I want Squirrel and Moose, Moose and Squirrel, and everybody votes for Squirrel one, what's going to happen to Moose? So, now, you're going to have to be a little strategic. You know, I'll vote Rocky number one, you vote Bullwinkle number one. You get some gamesmanship here.
And Mr. Schlickman, just to interrupt. This is in the context of a multi-seat race that you're talking about. Yeah?
Yes, yes, yes.
Like a two-seat race that you select two... Any two candidates, correct?
Right, right. So, it complicates things. Now, bringing it back into this room. A month ago, we voted for school committee. And I've got two very good colleagues on the school committee, Kersey and Len. Now, I can vote for Kersey, I can vote for Len, life is good. Now, what? How do I rank them? Is Kersey number one, or is Len number one? Why should I have to make that decision? And on the other side, looking at it from the point of view of a candidate, I have run in six multi-seat elections. Each time, except for the first time in 2001, I've got more than fifty percent of the vote. And since 2013, everybody who has been elected in the multi-seat election has received more than fifty percent of the voters supporting them. When I run, it is not in my best interest to ask for bullet votes. Strategically, I ask... I make a simple ask. Please give me one of your three votes. And I take every other candidate in the race, and I put them on my website, link to their website, link to their ACMI profile. It is to my advantage for people to vote, use all three votes in that election. Because if you're using all three votes, I think I stand a pretty good chance of getting one of them. Please give me one of your three votes. But if we adopt this, it changes the dynamic. The dynamic becomes not, can I have one of your three votes? It becomes, I need your number one vote. It's a harder ask. It's less civil. It's more gamesmanship. Changes the game in a negative context. And we talk about consistency. Town Meeting races will remain under the current method. So, either we do single-seat ranked choice, multi-seat traditional, or make a change somewheres in the middle. It's not going to add to voter confusion. In fact, it'll probably be easier to deal with if we do ranked choice only on single-seat. If you want this to be adopted into law, if you want a successful referendum, if you want this to really happen, I urge you to follow my recommendation in voting yes on my substitute. And if the substitute fails, voting no on the main motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schlickman. And just... Let's show the speaker queue. And while we're bringing that up, I just wanted to clarify two things. First is, like, the reason why I did interject and ask Mr. Schlickman a question... I'm not usually in the habit. A moderator shouldn't be in the habit of asking someone giving a presentation questions. But it was a... What I was assessing was a question of scope, with the understanding that if it ventured outside of the multi-seat races, then it could be out of scope. But I was actually in error for doing that. And I apologize, Mr. Schlickman, because this is a substitute motion. And so, the scope for your motion is everything in your substitute motion, which covers the entirety. So, I apologize for the interruption there. Okay. So, the speaker queue. Let's take Leslie Waxman and then Paul Selker.
Leslie Waxman, Precinct Six. I have over fifteen years of experience in ranked-choice election administration as the Assistant Director of Elections in Cambridge. And I was also a member of Arlington's Election Modernization Committee for three years. The EMC put a lot of work into creating a ranked-choice voting proposal that made sense for Arlington. The committee was composed of stakeholders from various boards and constituencies, including Town Meeting, the Select Board, the School Committee, the Clerk's Office, the Board of Registars, the Democratic and Republican Town Committees, Disabilities Commission, the League of Women Voters, as well as students from Arlington High School. We investigated many proposals seriously and thoroughly. And we proposed ranked-choice voting because that's what's best for our town. We especially focused on the different options for how we should vote in multi-seat elections. We concluded that ranked-choice voting was still the best option. From that perspective, I urge you to reject the substitute motion. The advantages of ranked-choice voting, such as encouraging more candidates to run and limiting gamesmanship, are just as important for multi-seat elections as they are for single-seat elections. The fact sheet that was sent out to argue in favor of the substitute motion provided a very specific example where there are two equally-good candidates, one very bad candidate, and no one else is interested in running. and no one else is interested in running. In that specific scenario, the current system might work, but ranked choice voting still works better. The voter can rank their two preferred candidates, one and two, and because of how ranked choice voting ballots are counted, the voter will end up helping whichever candidate needs the vote. The two candidates can campaign together, asking voters to rank them both. In fact, that happens all the time in Cambridge. Outside of that specific example provided, the gamesmanship becomes much worse without ranked choice voting. What if there is one candidate you really want to get elected, one you don't mind, and one that you strongly oppose? You might want to vote for the two candidates you don't oppose. However, under the current system, voting for two people could cause the one you fully support to lose to the one you don't mind. Under ranked choice voting, ranking a second choice never harms your first-choice candidate. Let me repeat that. Ranking someone second or third cannot ever have any negative effect on your vote for your first choice. And what if there are more than two allied people interested in running for two seats and one opposition person running? The allied people might want to discourage one of their allies from running at all so that they don't split the vote among three candidates instead of two. When three or more like-minded candidates run for two seats in our current system, they are helping their opposition win. With ranked choice voting, there is no need to do that. All of the candidates can run, voters will rank their choices, and if their preferred candidate is defeated or already elected, their ballot will be transferred to the next candidate they support. I have more scenarios where the current system would require strategic voting, and ranked choice voting would allow the voter to vote honestly, but I won't bore them, bore you with them tonight. It's also worth remembering that the select board race is a multi-seat election in some years and a single-seat election in other years. The substitute motion would have you vote, have you using ranked choice voting for some members and the old style of voting for others. These people are doing the same job on the same board, but they would be elected under very different circumstances. In my role as Assistant Director of Elections in a city that has ranked choice, I have had a lot of conversations with people from all over the country who are considering adopting ranked choice voting. And the truth is that I wasn't sure at first that it was a good idea for Arlington. But I think the biggest problem with our local elections is lack of participation. Turnout in annual town elections is low, often less than 20%, sometimes even less than 15. That lack of participation certainly isn't helped by the fact that a lot of town races are uncontested. When the EMC studied the issue, we learned that people were being actively discouraged from running for town office out of fear that they would take votes away from similar candidates who might have had a better chance at winning. After all, in our current system, if two similar candidates run, they could easily split the vote and make it so neither will win. When people are being told not to run or to wait their turn, it means that the elections are being decided by political insiders before the ballots are even printed. That is not democracy, and it's no wonder that voters don't bother participating in that. To those who feel our current system is not broken, I say this: just because it has worked for you does not mean it has worked for everyone, and it doesn't mean it's right. Please vote no on the substitute motion, and then vote yes for ranked choice voting.
Okay, thank you. Let's take Paul Selker and then Amos Meeks. And just to be clear, town meeting will not be voting on the merits of Mr. Moose, Mr. Squirrel, or Mr. Whiplash. Go ahead.
Thank you. Paul Selker, Precinct 9. I actually have two questions, and I'm not quite sure who will take them, but a proponent of this motion, hopefully. The one speaks to, to my fellow Precinct 9 town, town meeting member, also Paul Schlickman's motion. I, I want to clarify, it seemed to me from the presentation that there's no requirement that you vote for all, you rank all candidates under the system that's being proposed in the main motion. And I want to clarify from someone who would know that that is the case, because other Paul seemed to suggest that that was not the case. I don't know who can answer that.
The, we can probably, the proponent. Can you repeat the question? I didn't quite follow.
Do you, you, do you have to rank all candidates in a multi, in a multi-seat election?
Greg Dennis, Precinct 1. No, you do not. You can rank just one, just as you do today. You can vote for just one. You can rank for, rank as many or as few candidates as you choose.
Okay.
All of those are a valid vote.
Okay, thank you. And stay there. I, I, I say this actually as someone who's pretty sympathetic to this and may well vote for it, but I'm curious if in your work on this topic, you looked at the research around voter confusion and also voter choices to opt out of the process. I know that in Portland, there were some concerns after they had joined, adopted ranked choice voting, that there, that, that voters actually opted out. I know that there's research on the other side of that. I know that maybe some of those effects diminish over time as people become more comfortable with ranked choice voting. And I'm, so I'm just interested to hear to what extent you've explored those issues.
Yeah, thank you. Greg Dennis, Precinct 1. So you're specifically interested in voter engagement with the ballot and understanding. So, you know, let me answer the understanding question. Yeah, it's probably the number-one fear of ranked choice voting, that voters aren't going to understand it. And that concern tends to dissipate as soon as they use it. Once you use it, you realize, oh, it's not so challenging. In fact, we're ranking things every day, and you can stop whenever you want. It's just asking, who's your first choice? Who's your second choice? Do you have a second choice? Do you have a third choice? And the evidence from around the country, around the world, is that voters tend to get it. And in fact, the more they use it, the more they like it. So Portland, Maine started off with ranked choice voting just for the city of Portland in 2011, then that voters, Maine passed it statewide for state primaries and federal primaries and general elections in 2016. They liked it more, so they added it in for presidential races. They liked it more, so they're trying to, they added it for more cities and towns, and so on. So I am seeing increased interest in adoption as the more people use it.
Thank you very much. I yield.
Okay, so next is Amos Meeks, and then Daniel Jalcutt.
Amos Meeks, Precinct 3. I think the first speaker made a lot of great points. I'm going to try not to repeat any of those, although I agree with them. So I'll try to keep this short. First of all, when it comes to ranked choice voting, I believe that this is really about information. The goal of an election is to express the will of the people. And the more of information we get about people's preferences, about what they want, allows us to better express that. When you don't use ranked choice voting, you're getting very coarse information. And especially when your number of votes is limited to the number of seats, if you have many more people running for an election than there are number of seats, you can get all sorts of terrible distortions, even in multirace elections that are equivalent to are just as bad as in single-seat elections. All ranked choice voting does is allow people to express more information, and then allow us to choose a result that better expresses the will of the people. To respond to some specific points that were brought up, I think that it's not fair to underestimate voters. And in this particular case, what we are doing is asking for the town to be able to have a referendum. So if we think that voters may or may not like this, let's ask them, when that means voting yes for this motion. And finally, to the question of voter confusion, this was somewhat addressed, but I think really the only way to lessen voter confusion is with practice. And I think that town elections are a great place for people to practice, for people to learn and develop this, and then potentially to grow this beyond the town. So with that, I ask that you support the main motion and vote no on the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Jalcutt, and then Sunjay Newton. In case anyone's wondering, a, an amendment to include essay questions for more granularity on the ballots is, would be out of scope.
Thank you. Daniel Jalcutt, Precinct 6. I move to terminate debate on the article and the amendment.
Okay, we have a motion to terminate debate under, for all, of all matters under Article 18, and a second. All those in favor of terminating debate say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed say no.
No!
Debate is not terminated. Okay. We have more than five standing. We'll take an electronic vote, and it's a two-thirds vote. Okay, voting is now open. If you're in favor of terminating debate, under Article 18, press 1 for yes. If you want to continue debate, press 2 for no, or 3 to abstain. Okay, let's close voting. Oh, it's very, voting, and debate is terminated. Yeah. 153 in the affirmative, 56 in the negative, seven abstentions. If you just had words that rhymed, it might be easier to hear the difference. Okay, so debate is terminated. We'll now take up a vote on the Schlickman substitute motion. And before we open voting on that, this would authorize the select board, it would change out the main motion to authorize the select board to file home rule legislation to elect town offices by ranked choice voting, except for multi-seat races. It would, ranked choice voting would only apply to single-seat races. And so if you want to substitute that for the main motion, you would press 1 for yes. And 2 would just leave the main motion as is. So let's open voting on the Schlickman substitute motion. Okay, voting is now open. This is a vote to substitute the Schlickman substitute motion in place of the main motion. Okay, voting is closed. And the motion fails. 27 in the affirmative, 185 in the negative, one abstention. So that leaves the main motion unsubstituted. So, let's see. So we're now going to take a vote on the main motion to authorize the select board to file home rule legislation to elect town offices by ranked choice voting. This is the recommended vote in the select board's supplemental report to town meeting. So let's take, let's open voting on the main motion, please. And it is unamended, unsubstituted. Let's see, did we have a countdown clock? I didn't see it, or... Okay, well, we'll keep it open for just a second. Okay, so, okay, five more seconds, and then we're going to close voting. Okay, let's close voting. Hundred, and it passes. 189 in the affirmative, 29 in the negative, and two abstentions. That takes us to Article 19. Ms. Mahon? Oh, before we get started, can we show the speaker queue? Sorry about that. We'll try to do this before we do the presentation, so everyone's not left in suspense. We'll first try to show the speaker queue, and then when you see it go blank, the speaker queue will be open for Article 19. Okay, it's now open. Ms. Mahon?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The board voted 4-0, with Mr. Helmuth recusing himself to file this home rule legislation to permit Arlington resident William Polari to sit for the firefighter's civil service exam despite being 32 years old. This legislation does not guarantee him an appointment as a firefighter, only the ability to sit through the exam and to get on the eligibility list relative to other applicants. All other civil service prerequisites of the application process will still apply, including a physical fitness examination, swim test interview. And I would ask the meeting's permission that Mr. Polari be allowed to address the body.
And is, is he a resident of Arlington? Then he has, he has the right to speak.
Hello, everyone. My name's William Polari. Born and raised in Arlington. I've lived here my entire life.
Address, I'm sorry, address, please.
83 Overlook Road.
Great, thank you.
I love this town. I love everyone in this town, and I'd like to give back to the people in this town however I can. And for me, I believe the best way to do that would be joining the Arlington Fire Department. I have a lot of friends in the department already, whom I know I work well with, and I know I'm going to fit right in. And, yeah, that's pretty much it. I appreciate everyone's time and everyone's consideration. And I thank you very much.
Great, thank you. We'll take Beth Ann Friedman, and then Mark Rosenthal. Oh, pass, okay. Mark Rosenthal, and then Gordon Jamison.
Mark Rosenthal, Precinct 14. I have two questions. I don't really know who to address them to. But number one, what is the current age limit under, under whatever law it is, that, that precludes Mr. Polari, was it?
Mr. Polari.
That precludes him from, from being hired? And two, does anybody know the rationale behind that age limit? Is it, does it have to do with, after training, how much, how much length of service can one expect out of such a person? Does it have to do with, after a certain age?
Right, well, we don't, we don't need to speculate. I think we can get an answer from Town Council. Mr. Cunningham?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Cunningham, Town Council. The age is set by statutes, specifically General Law, Chapter 31, and the, and the maximum age for taking the exam is age 31. Unfortunately, I'm not familiar with the rationale of the legislature for that particular number, so I don't want to necessarily speculate, but likely due to the physical requirements necessary for firefighters.
Thank you. I guess my only other question is, is there anybody else here who would have any knowledge of the rationale behind the age limit?
Yes, but I don't know who they are. Mr. Feeny, do you? Anyone else? Maybe the answer is, what, Mr. Tosti?
When a uniformed officer, Al Tosti, Precinct 17, when a uniformed officer, either fire or police, can be a very difficult, dangerous job. It does a lot of wear and tear on, on the body. And you also, in exchange for this, get substantial benefits. You can retire earlier than most public employees, and there are other benefits as far as health benefits and things like that. If you hire somebody who's 45 years old, you're only going to get 10 years until they retire. And the older they are, the more there is a danger of being, going out on disability. So you want to hire somebody who's young, not only because they're young, they're in their 20s, they're stronger, they can bounce back, and you're going to get 20, 30, maybe 40, well, 30 years of, of active work from them. You hire somebody who is much older than that, let's say 40, 45, you're only going to get 10 years of active service, and you're going to pay a great deal of money, the town will pay a great deal of money for those 10 years. So I think that's, besides just being young and being able to do the job, that's one of the other logics behind an age requirement.
Thank you. That was very enlightening.
Great, thank you. I'll take Gordon Jamison, and then Paul Schlickman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jamison, Precinct 12. In years past, I've asked the fire chief to state the department's thoughts on this. And in lieu of the fire chief, perhaps the manager knows the thoughts of the fire chief.
Is Chief Kelly here? Or, Mr. Feeny, do you want to speak to that?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jim Feeny, Town Manager. The fire, the fire chief, Kelly has no objections to this warrant article.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Paul Schlickman, and then Guillermo Hamlin.
Paul Schlickman, Precinct 9. Have we ever hired a candidate after they've gone through this legislative process?
Mr. Feeny, do you have an answer to that question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jim Feeny, Town Manager. The most recent candidate for which town meeting approved special legislation was appointed to the position of firefighter.
Was affirmatively appointed.
Yes.
Thank you.
Guillermo Hamlin, and then Christopher Moore. We have a point of order, Mr. Tosti? Sure, sure. Can we show the speaker queue?
Guillermo Hamlin, Precinct 14. I was actually going to ask the same question Paul Schlickman did, so I'm just going to pivot and say that I don't see any particular reason why we should deny this Arlington resident the opportunity, not to delve too much into it. I think we should give them the opportunity, as stated by our gentleman here. He's not in his mid-40s. The likelihood of being a burden on the town's finances. And despite the shortness of the applicant's reasoning, I believe in him, and he's fit in mind and body. Let's just approve this and move it, move it along. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Pi Fisher and then Peter Fiore. And Pi Fisher from the Satellite Room.
Pi Fisher, precinct six. There was some talk as to whether, when firefighters start to receive, when they're able to retire. How many years does a firefighter need to serve before they can collect a pension?
Mr. Feeny? How many years before a firefighter can receive a pension, I believe, is the question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jim Feeny. I believe the minimum number of years of service is 10. The maximum age at which they will be sort of forced into retirement is 65 years old. Thank you. I yield.
Peter Fiore and then, okay, Al Tosti? And, and after Mr. Tosti, Rat Nakar, Valanke.
Al Tosti, 17. Move the question.
Okay, we have a motion to terminate debate, and a second. All those in favor of terminating debate under Article 19, say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed, say no. Debate is terminated with a two-thirds vote. Okay, so let me explain the main motion, and then we'll open voting afterwards. The main motion is to authorize the select board to file home rule legislation to enable William Polari, who is here tonight, to address the meeting, a resident of the town, to be eligible for appointment as a firefighter in the town of Arlington, notwithstanding the fact that he has attained the age of 32. So that, that is the, the main motion that we're voting. So let's open up voting on the main motion of Article 19. Okay, voting is now open. If you want, if you want to authorize the select board to file that home rule legislation, press one for yes. If you are opposed to that, press two for no, or three to abstain. Okay, voting is closed. And the motion passes 199 in the affirmative 12 and the negative six abstentions. That takes us to Article 20. Let's show the speaker queue. And then, once it's shown, we can publicly clear it. Okay, let's clear it. And once it goes blank, the speaker queue will be open for Article 20. Okay. Ms. Mahon, or? Mr. Feeny is going to open Article 20 for us. Mr. Feeny?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jim Feeny, Town Manager. So Article 20 received support from the select board and seeks to further support Arlington's veterans by adopting a local option made possible by the HERO Act, which was legislation passed in calendar year 2024. Specifically, clause 22i, if adopted, would increase the amount of the tax exemption already granted to qualifying veterans on their domiciles annually by a cost of living adjustment that is determined by the Commonwealth through the Department of Revenue, and it is based on the Consumer Price Index. These exemptions are otherwise flat dollar amounts codified in the relative state statute. For reference, this year, the CPI increase was 3.4%. If adopted, this local option will work just like the local option that Town Meeting adopted for certain senior citizen tax exemptions back in 2017. For perspective, were clause 22i already in effect, it would have cost the town approximately $2,500, spread across the 140 veterans exemptions that were granted. However, if approved, this would take effect in fiscal year '26. While not necessarily a significant amount of tax relief, it remains the case, of course, that every dollar counts. So on behalf of Veterans Services Director Colonel Philip McGovern, I want to thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Seeing no requests from the speaker queue, we can proceed to a vote on the main motion, which I'll describe first. It's a vote to accept general laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22i, which authorizes an annual increase in the amount of exemption granted under general laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22a, Clause 22b, Clause 22c, Clause 22e, and Clause 22f, based on the Consumer Price Index or CPI for the previous year. So that is now the main motion that we're voting on. So let's bring up a vote on the main motion for Article 20. Voting is open. If you're in favor of accepting that general law clauses, press one for yes. If you're opposed to accepting those clauses, press two for no, or three to abstain. Okay, let's close voting. And motion passes 215 in the affirmative, one in the negative, four abstentions. That takes us to Article 21. And before we take Ms. Mahon, you can take the podium, but let's show the speaker queue. And then we'll, we'll clear it. And as soon as it goes blank, it means that it has been cleared and you can request to speak. Ms. Mahon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you can see, the board voted unanimously favorable action following a presentation by the then-chair of the school committee, Mr. Schlickman. And if this article is adopted, the town would accept provisions of the new state legislation permitting us to install a school bus violation detection monitoring system on our buses ridden by our town students. And I would ask the proponent, Mr. Schlickman, to further elaborate, please.
Mr. Schlickman? Did you have a presentation to? Okay.
Thank you, Chair Mahon. Paul Schlickman, precinct nine, a member of the Arlington School Committee. This came as a little bit of a surprise to us in that in early January, the governor signed legislation that would enable municipalities to go and use photo enforcement of school buses. So what would happen is, under this authorization or acceptance of the legislation, the town and the school department would be able to work together to come up with, to institute a system if we so choose. We could, we could choose to do it, we might not. But the issue here is merely to accept the legislation that will allow us to do this. Peabody and Salem were cities that piloted this over the past couple of years and found an extraordinary number of violations of the school bus law. What will happen if this law is accepted in Arlington and we implement it is that there'd be a camera attached to the stop arm on the bus so that when the lights start flashing, the arm comes out, there'll be a camera. If a car drives past violating the law that says you have to stop for a school bus, that video would be recorded. It would be given to the police department. They would look to see if there was indeed a violation, check the license plate. And if they so determined, they would send a summons, a notice of violation to the registered owner of the vehicle. It would not count as points in the license. Videotape would be destroyed after about a month, so that a lot of privacy concerns have been addressed. What we're asking basically right now is that we just accept this legislation, and if we do, then we can go and explore this further. Thank you.
Thank you. Is, is this speaker queue correct? Because the timestamps look like they're from 10:42 to 10:58. It's not correct. This doesn't seem to reflect what folks clicked in for. Do we have a speaker queue from a few minutes ago? We do not, so we need to reset it. Okay, can we, apologies for that. Can we reset this queue? And it is now open. Mr., I, I did see Mr. Tremblay's name before. Mr. Tremblay, did you want to speak to this? Yeah, okay, come on, coming up. Oh, there, okay. Oh, I see, interesting. I'm not sure how, okay. Apologies for that technical glitch. Mr. Tremblay?
Hey, Tremblay, precinct 19. Full disclosure, many years ago, I did drive a school bus myself. And so I am generally in favor of this because it's kind of dangerous to have people passing school buses and possibly hitting little kids. I do have a couple of comments, though. One of them is, by putting the camera on the stop arm, then you don't get to see the cars that are passing you on the right, which did happen to me a couple of times. And I saw them coming and closed the door on the kids so they wouldn't get nailed getting off on the curb side of the car. That's the first comment. The second comment, though, is one thing when I, that I used to do is, and I, and I hope the school committee or the school bus people will train their drivers this way. When I started having a lot of cars stacked up behind me, I'd pull over and let them by, because I think one of the reasons that people pass school buses is that they're being driven a little bit crazy after they've been behind a school bus for 10, 15 minutes, and they can't get by. That may not be a problem in Arlington, because Arlington's kind of small. But in general, I, I think bus drivers should be trained to pull over if you get, start getting some number of cars behind you. Just pull over and let them by. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. We'll take Sam Polk and then Jane Biondi.
Hi, Sam Polk, precinct 12. I would like to highlight two points. The first is a 2023 pilot study from Peabody that we can take data from. So they installed 10 school, or 10 school buses with these traffic enforcement cameras. And during a six-week period, they had 3.6 illegal passings per bus per day. So this is really a prevalent issue. Another piece that I wanted to talk about is the data surveillance or the data privacy aspect, which I think is important, given the current state of the politics. So I want to just briefly talk about the data privacy safeguards that are in this law. So all recorded data, video, audio, and photos are going to be owned directly by the town, even if the vendor operates or manages the camera system. Data is strictly limited in its usage around enforcing violations of school bus stop laws or defending against related charges. And data has to be destroyed within 30 days if there's no violation. And if there is a violation, it has to be destroyed within a year. So that, I'm going to vote in favor. I think that this is very, it's a very good law. It's going to help a lot of pedestrians and children. Thank you.
Thank you. Jane Biondi and then Anna Henkin.
Pass.
Anna Henkin and then Kristin Penneren.
Anna Henkin, precinct six. I just wanted to get an assurance that, so the law currently says that this can't be used for any other kinds of violations other than school bus violations. Do we have any knowledge that there's definitely some sort of safeguard against that not being expanded significantly in this being able to be used for other kinds of violations or to track other things?
I think Town Council might be able to answer that. Mr. Cunningham?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Cunningham, Town Council. For that to occur, the statute would have to be amended to allow for additional uses. The uses are, are set forth in the legislation that we're considering tonight by local acceptance. So absent some change at the state legislature and our subsequent acceptance of that legislation, there would be no change.
Perfect, thank you so much. That's honestly really reassuring. Also, just as a information question, is there a rough estimate of how many, I guess, paid police hours tend to need to be used to monitor something like this? Is it something we'd need to budget for in advance?
Mr. Schlickman, do you know, or Mr. Feeny?
Paul Schlickman, precinct nine, a member of the school committee. We, we certainly have to price it out, but the fact is, we do have a school resource officer and a traffic officer who would be doing this kind of work normally. So I don't, would, I would not anticipate additional time on, on their behalf.
All right, thank you so much. That's really helpful.
Thank you. Kristin Penneren and then Christopher Moore.
Kristin Penneren, precinct 20. I am generally strongly in favor of acceptance of this legislation. And I had just a couple questions about enforcement. I was hoping that I could gain a better understanding of who would be responsible for issuing citations? Who would be responsible for enforcing the legislation if the incidents occur in Arlington, which I think is the purpose here?
Can someone answer that, either on the school department side or the town side?
And, and actually, the reason that I'm asking is because I'm interested in traffic safety more broadly, as most of us are. And I had been following some public discussions about whether camera-based enforcement of traffic safety measures is generally legally enforceable or not. So that's the context for my question.
Paul Schlickman, precinct nine, and a member of the school committee. In this instance, the tapes from a school bus would be reviewed by an officer. An officer would be, a police officer would be required to issue a summons. Obviously, there are no other photo enforcement that was enacted by the legislature attached to this, so red light cameras, anything of nature would not apply.
And may I also please ask, is there already discussion about what the potential consequences could be in terms of penalties? Or is that out of scope for this, for what we're doing this evening?
The penalties are probably prescribed under mass general law.
Okay, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Paul Schimek? Pass. Okay, seeing no more speakers, we can proceed to a vote on the main motion, which I'll explain first. This is a vote to accept general laws, Chapter 40, Section 71, enabling the town to install, operate, and maintain school bus violation detection monitoring systems on school buses, limited to monitoring and detecting violations of motor vehicle operators who fail to stop for a school bus. So let's open voting now on the main motion of Article 21. Voting is now open. If you're in favor of accepting that general law in Arlington, press one for yes, or press two for no to reject it. Five seconds until we close voting. Okay, let's close voting. And the main motion passes 212 in the affirmative, four in the negative, five abstentions. It's almost, it's just about 9:30, so let's take a 10-minute break and come back sharp in 10 minutes. We're going to start right away. Thank you. While everyone's finding their seats, I have an update about the balcony microphone situation. So please pay attention. If you're in the balcony, if you're sitting in the balcony tonight, even if you're not physically there right now, there's an issue with the microphones that were in the balcony, as we mentioned before, and our tech staff have not been able to resolve that issue tonight. And so I apologize for that. And so when you are called as the next speaker, because I've been calling kind of the next two speakers at each time. And so if you're the second speaker that I've announced, and you're sitting in the balcony, I'm going to ask that, because it's not just an issue of the Satellite Room not hearing you, and that would be bad enough, but also it's not in the recording, like the video recording of the meeting, which means the stenographer can't hear it either. So that's, that's particularly bad as well. And so if you're in the balcony and your name is coming up, and if I've announced that you're the second speaker coming up in the speaker queue, if you could, I apologize for the inconvenience, but if you could please make your way either to the auditorium floor and speak from the podiums down here, or in the Satellite Room, which you could reach from this side of the gallery, the side balcony, the Satellite Room is right through that door. And it is, masking is optional in there, but since everyone conventionally is, is wearing masks in there for separation from everyone else in here, just asking as a courtesy, if you wouldn't mind, if you're using that room, there's a box of masks, I believe, right outside the door that are provided by the town if you wanted to do that. Or you can come down to the, the first level on the auditorium floor. And again, I apologize for the inconvenience for the folks sitting up in the balcony. You could also just sit down in the main floor as well, and that would work fine, too. Thank you. Okay, so we now have Article 22 in front of us. Can we show the speaker queue? And... And let's clear it. And so when this list goes blank, the speaker queue is open for Article 22. And let's see, I believe Mr. Hurd of the Select Board is going to introduce this article.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Hurd from the Select Board, also a member of the CDBG Subcommittee. In Article 22, we are seeking for Town Meeting's endorsement of the Program Year 51 CDBG Budget Recommendations as outlined in the CDBG Report to Town Meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
We voted 6-0 with the help of Ms. Feeny on this one.
You can do that? Okay. Okay, do we have any other presentation under this? Or, oh, Director Ricker, please. Are there slides that we need to bring up, or are you all set?
Good evening. Can you hear me? Great. All right. My name is Claire Ricker. I am your Director of Planning and Community Development here in the town of Arlington. Although we are operating in a time of real uncertainty regarding federal funding, the town of Arlington does anticipate to receive $1,050,000 in new community development block grant funds, or CDBG funds, from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, otherwise known as HUD, for the period of July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2026, which is Program Year 51. A total of $285,795 from prior year's program income, previously budgeted but unexpended funds, and funds allocated to programs that were canceled will also be reprogrammed during Program Year 51. At this time, we are waiting for federal CDBG allocations to be announced. Once the federal congressional budget resolution is approved for the 2026 federal fiscal year, HUD will then calculate exact entitlement grant allocations. Town meeting approval, excuse me, Town meeting approval is required to submit the town's application to HUD for Program Year 51. Town meeting approval is being sought at this time to ensure that the town's CDBG submittal requirements are completed well before HUD's deadline of August 15. Earlier this year, the CDBG Subcommittee met to review applications for funding and develop a budget and annual action plan for the use of the anticipated CDBG funds. Each request has been placed into one of six categories: affordable housing, public services, economic development, public facilities improvements, planning, and administration. This year, the committee was able to recommend funding for each request, although not always in the amount requested. For affordable housing, funding was recommended for Caritas Communities and the Housing Corporation of Arlington for preservation of affordable housing and energy efficiency projects. For public services related to programming, funding was recommended for the Arlington Center for the Arts for arts programming scholarships and for arts workshops at Arlington Housing Authority locations. Funding was recommended for Arlington Eats Food Market Program for Seniors, the Arlington Housing Authority Operations Success Learning Center, the Arlington Youth Counseling Center for Mental Health Services for Youth and Families, the Boys and Girls Club for their scholarship program, to the Council on Aging for their Adult Day Health Scholarships, the Volunteer Coordinator Position and Transportation Program, to the Fidelity House for their Monotony Manor Outreach Program and their Jobs, Jobs, Jobs program, to Lamp Light Literacy for their English for Speakers of Other Languages program, and to the Recreation Department for the Recreation Scholarship Program. For public facilities and improvements, funding was recommended for the Arlington Housing Authority Chestnut Manor ADA Accessible Walkways and Paving Project, to the Boys and Girls Club for their Pool Chair Lift and ADA Accessible Stair System, to the Department of Public Works for their ongoing ADA Sidewalk Ramp Installation Project, to the Fidelity House for their Sprinkler System, to Food Link for Facilities Improvements. For Economic Development, funding was recommended for the Department of Planning and Community Development Storefront Facade Improvement Program. For planning, funding was recommended for the Department of Planning and Community Development for offsets for planners' salaries when working on CDBG eligible activities and for long-range planning studies, including the Comprehensive Plan Update, which is currently underway. It's the AMP UP project. Finally, for administration, funding was recommended for the Department of Planning and Community Development, for the Community Development Block Grant Administrator Position, and for general administration of the CDBG program. Over the past 50 years, the town of Arlington has deployed almost $60 million in CDBG funding to improve accessibility for residents with disabilities and mobility issues, to improve the equality of life for seniors and young people from families with low and moderate income, and to provide and preserve affordable housing. We look forward to continuing our work over the next year. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We'll go to the speaker queue now. Can we show that? First is Dean Carmen and then Janet Mahoney.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dean Carmen, Precinct 20. While I agree with the town's position to keep moving ahead with CDBG planning as if we're going to get it, I think it's also important as a group here to talk about what happens if we don't, right? And so my question, Mr. Moderator, is if in the federal budget process, Congress passes a budget and the president signs a budget that doesn't have CDBG funding for Arlington, or if administratively Housing and Urban Development cuts funding to Arlington, what
Mr. Feeny, can you answer that?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jim Feeny, Town Manager. If that were to happen, we would have to call the CDBG Subcommittee back together to meet and vote an alternative budget based on whatever amount of money was made available to the town.
And if there's no money, if it's gone altogether, it's just gone. There's no magic pot-of-town funds to cover any of this.
That is correct.
Yes, I know. So look, this is why I bring it up. I think it's important. We talked about this at our, you know, I've had, I've had the great pleasure of volunteering on the town's Finance Committee for probably a little short of 20 years. Now, one of the things I get very sensitive of is when, I'm going to call it pitchfork mobs show up at the town manager's office and beat him up over something that he or she cannot control, right? And there is a, there is a very real possibility at some point that this money could go away, right? I don't know, if I remember, I think, like a lot of you, I've been around long enough to know that we don't really, like, straight-up qualify for this. There's some grandfathering and some other things, right? And so when you have a federal government who has a, who's a legislator, an executive branch, whose stated mission is to reduce federal spending, this could just be an easy target, right? And if that happens, it would be unfortunate for all of the recipients. But it would not be the choice of the town, right? And so I bring it up so we're all understanding, we have a common understanding. If you're frustrated, if it does happen and you're frustrated, you know who to scream and yell at. It's not the people behind me, it's people in Washington, D.C. And that's about it, right? I'm going to vote to endorse it. I do think it's great that we play as if it's, you know, you keep going with the game as if it's going to happen. If it doesn't happen, at least we understand, you know, who did or did not cause that event to occur. Thank you.
Thank you. Take Linda Hansen and then Stephen Revellak.
Hi, Linda Hansen, Precinct 9. Good evening. I wanted to share a little research dive I did into the recent history of CDBG public services grants. The spreadsheet I created was added to the annotated warrant to Article 22. I did run it by Director Ricker, but I want to say if there are any mistakes or oversights, I own those. As you know, the public services bucket is restricted to 15% of the total grant award. These funds are really one of the only ways that town funds can be used to support and the many important services that are varied and strong network of human service nonprofits in town provide for Arlington residents, even if it's effectively passed through federal dollars. What I found was that over the past few years, a small group of what I would very affectionately call legacy organizations, the Boys and Girls Club, Fidelity, AYCC, the Rec Department, and the Council on Aging consistently received the lion's share of the funding. All of these organizations provide critically important services and supports for the targeted low and moderate income residents these funds are meant to target. That said, I am pleased that this year the CDBG Committee has opted to open up funding opportunities to nonprofits that are becoming increasingly important to our residents, the Center for the Arts, Arlington Eats, and Lamp Light Literacy. These programs provide opportunities for lower-income residents to participate in arts programming, to access critically important food to help combat food insecurity, and to participate in English language learning classes. I do want to highlight just briefly Arlington Eats and Lamp Light Literacy specifically to explain how these services are increasingly important to our residents. I do serve on the Arlington Eats Board, but I'm not speaking as a board member this evening. As the cost of living continues to increase, more and more Arlington residents find themselves food insecure. The Greater Boston Food Bank estimates that fully 20% of Arlington households experience food insecurity at some point during the year, up from 10% not too long ago. The eats market is currently serving over 500 families a week, and the number keeps growing. In order to keep up with this demand, additional funding is needed. I also want to touch on an organization you might not be as familiar with, Lamp Light Literacy. I reached out to the director of the organization so that I could share some highlights with you. When immigrants come to this country, their initial needs are for shelter, food, and English language classes so that they can get jobs and support their families. Lamp Light Literacy is an Arlington-based organization that serves adult students from over 25 different countries. 85% of the students live in Arlington. One-third are Arlington parents with school-aged children in our schools. The focus of the program is English language proficiency, but they have recently added career advising and job search skill components, as well as a program to support CNAs with a course to prepare them for nursing school admission. Lamp Light Literacy has built strong partnerships with Arlington nonprofits and government agencies who also serve this population, specifically Arlington Eats, Arlington Housing Authority, and the Housing Corporation of Arlington. As we can see, all of these organizations are working together to provide a human services safety net for our community. I encourage you to vote to support this article and the grant as outlined. And I also encourage the CDBG Committee to continue to propose grants that support our organizations that are meeting a wide range of critical needs in our community, knowing it's a tough call and that there are many needs for limited funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Revellak and then Ellen Amat.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Revellak, Precinct 1. The organizations named in the Community Development Block Grant Report do a lot of good in town. It's great that we can support them, and I do plan to vote in favor of this. I do have one question about one of the award recommendations. And, Mr. Moderator, in disclosure, I did not send this to anyone in advance, and if no one knows the answer, then, well, it was just a curious question, and I'll take it at that. But on page five, there is a recommendation for the Fidelity House sprinkler system. The last two sentences of the paragraph read, "The project is expected to benefit 50,000 individuals and complies with National Objective LMA. Funding is recommended at $150,000." Sprinklers are great. I'm just curious where the estimate of 50,000 individuals came from.
Mr. Feeny, do you have an answer to that question? You do not?
It's not terribly relevant. It is, we can call it trivia. Okay, well, thank you very much.
I don't see anyone identifying themselves as having an answer to that question.
Okay, but I do hope people support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen Amat and then Junko Nagano. Junko Nagano and then Patrick Hanlon.
Junko Nagano, Precinct 11. I was going to ask to endorse this, but since no one is opposing it, I move to close the debate.
Okay, so I'll explain why everyone's grumbling. I'll explain why everyone's grumbling right now. So according to our town bylaws, there's a provision in there that anyone terminating debate at town meeting cannot make any other commentary other than actually making the motion. I did that once as a town meeting member, and you'll do it exactly once. Okay, seeing no other speakers in the queue, debate is terminated, so you kind of succeeded anyway. Actually, no, we do have a couple more speakers. We have Jennifer Cotrero and then Kristin Harris. Pass, pass. Beth Benedict? Pass, okay. So we have no more speakers. So we'll bring up a vote on the main motion after I describe what it is. This is a vote to endorse the, we're not going to start voting, not going to open voting yet, but endorse, to vote to endorse the application for federal fiscal year 2026 prepared by the town manager and the Select Board under the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended. Okay, so let's open voting now. So if you're in favor of that endorsement of that application for CDBG funds, press 1 for yes. If you're opposed to endorsing that application for CDBG funds, press 2 for no or 3 to abstain. Point of order, Mr. Jalcutt. Let's keep the vote, okay, never mind.
Daniel Jalcutt, Precinct 6. This doesn't seem critical to me. I was just a little confused looking at the screen. When you said voting would open soon, the vote tally was increasing. And so it just kind of conveys a mismatch between the reality of whether voting is open or not.
Yeah, it's a technology called negative latency.
Okay.
I don't have a technical, I'll try to get a technical answer to that before the next meeting. So voting is closed, and the main motion passes 209 in the affirmative, 0 in the negative, 4 abstentions. It is unanimous. Okay, so that takes us to Article 23. We're revolving funds, before we take Ms. Mahoney, let's show the speaker queue. And let's, and let's clear that. And so when this queue goes empty, it means it's open for Article 23 requests to speak. Thank you, Ms. Mahoney.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As you can see, the board voted unanimously for this warrant article, and I would ask that our deputy town manager and finance director, Alex McGee, get up to speak to this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Alex McGee, Deputy Town Manager, Finance Director. Article 23 seeks to authorize annual expenditure caps on all established revolving funds. As a reminder, a revolving fund is a segregated fund whose activities generate monies which then support the programs associated with the fund. I want to note that last year at town meeting, we incorrectly set up two funds, the Cutter Gallery Rentals and Community Center Rentals Funds. Those are related to the bylaw issue that we uncovered. Any monies that had been collected into those during fiscal year 25, which we are currently in, have been returned to the general fund, and we will revisit them at the next town meeting. So I'm going to walk through all of our revolving funds and the expenditure cap that we're proposing, and then at the end, maybe we can do, if there are any questions or anything. So first, the private ways revolving fund for $1 million, the public way repairs fund for $15,000 cap, Fox Library Community Center rentals with a $20,000 cap, the Robbins House rentals with a $75,000 cap, Uncle Sam fees with a $2,000 cap, life support services, which is our ambulance fund fees, with an $800,000 cap, Board of Health fees for $150,000, field user fees for $120,000, Robbins Library rentals for $8,000, Town Hall rentals for $175,000, White Goods recycling fees for $80,000, library vending fees for $25,000, the Gibbs School Energy fees, $120,000, Council on Aging program fees for $100,000. And that's all of the funds that we're looking to establish and authorize caps on for FY26. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So we'll now go to the speaker queue, and first is Annie Lacourt and then Peter Fiore.
Annie Lacourt, Precinct 13. So Alex, I have a couple of questions in general about revolving funds. So we set up revolving funds in order to take a dedicated stream of income and match it to a dedicated set of expenses, correct? And I'm sorry, Greg, I didn't mean to.
Yep, Mr. McGee.
Yeah, Alex McGee, Deputy Town Manager. That is correct.
Okay. And so, for example, the Board of Health fees with a beginning balance of $420,000 $420,000, et cetera, et cetera, and a cap of $150,000. You have money coming in from where for that fund?
The money comes in for revenue for fees for permits, re-inspections, vaccinations, seminars, and fines.
And what are the authorized expenditures?
Associated programs with the Board of Health.
Okay, and who can make a decision about how to spend that money?
Under state law, the department head of those departments gets to make those decisions.
Okay, so this is how all our revolving funds work, correct?
Yes, it's how all revolving funds work.
Including our ambulance fund, for example, that has an $800,000 cap?
Correct.
Okay, so no additional vote needed to manage an appropriation. And what would happen if, for example, you spent money out of one of these revolving funds on something that wasn't related to it? How would we catch that error?
It would come up, so our comptroller needs to authorize these, so through our, you know, our accounting office, and also through our annual audit procedure.
Okay, so we would be caught by the auditor?
Hopefully, yes.
They've never not caught it. Anyways, thank you very much.
Thank you. Judith Garber next, and then Gordon Jamison.
Judith Garber, Precinct 4. I was looking at the Robbins Library Rentals on page 44 of the Select Board Report. It looks like they had $85,727 in receipts. Is that a typo? Because I don't, then there's the same amount in the Town Hall Rentals receipts on the next page, and it doesn't seem to make sense to me.
Mr. McGee, do you want to address that?
I would like to address that. That was just a typo, and it was corrected in the supplemental report that was issued by the Select Board on Friday. And let me just give you the new number, just a moment, please. The correct number, so in lieu of $85,727, was actually $5,475.
That makes a lot of sense. I'm also curious as to why the balance and the receipts for private way repairs are so much more than public way repairs. Is that just a function of how revolving funds work?
It's a function of how, so public way repairs, state law changed in 2018, and now utilities make required repairs when they do work on public ways, and that was what we typically use that fund for. Private ways, this is how in town we allow for private ways to be repaired, and with the town to help act as an agent for that repair. There's an opportunity for residents to work together to determine they want to make a private way repair, and then they can pay, they have to pay a certain portion upfront, and then the rest can be borrowed at five, over five years at a low interest cost coming back to the town.
All right, thanks very much.
Good, thank you. Take Gordon Jamison. And while he comes up, just a reminder that the supplemental report of the Select Board, which we received tonight, includes updated recommended votes for four articles, including Article 23, the current one, and Article 24, the next one. Mr. Jamison?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator, Gordon Jamison, Precinct 12. If you go to the back of the supplemental report, you'll find this page, which is something that was implemented when Sandy Poehler was the Deputy Town Manager at my request, I may say, and I'm very pleased that there's some more granularity given to each of these accounts in this life board report. I have only one question. The contracted services in the life support, is that, are we contracting more town employees, or are we contracting something else?
Mr. McGee, what page is this on, Mr. Jamison?
It's on page A1 of the last page of the Select Board Supplemental Report.
Yep, Mr. McGee.
Yeah, the question was, under this life support, the contracted services are for more town services or for something else?
Great question. The life support services...
Name and title, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Alex McGee, Deputy Town Manager. The life support services is our ambulance contract, and so these, what funds out of here is exclusively the money that works on our advanced life support and basic life support services.
So Armstrong.
Correct.
Okay, and the top number, just for everyone's verification, is that's an offset in the annual budget?
Correct, it comes with an offset in our fire department, and we also offset some capital debt service in there.
On the ambulance, yes.
On, yeah, related equipment.
Like 50,000 on that and 50,000 for services.
Something like that, I don't know the exact off the top of my head.
And someday, you'll also include the benefits, hopefully. Thank you very much.
Scope on the future, okay. Seeing no more speakers in the queue, we can proceed to vote on the main motion, and before we open voting, this is a vote to update the, this recommended vote was updated, as I mentioned, in the Select Board Supplemental Report, to reauthorize the 14 listed revolving funds for FY 2020, fiscal year 2026. There were two stricken from an earlier Select Board Report at the end for reasons, which I'm not going to get into, because I believe that was already covered. So, okay, so let's open voting now. If you're in favor of reauthorizing the listed revolving funds for FY26, vote 1 for yes, and 2 to reject the reauthorization of those revolving funds, 3 to abstain. And it is unanimous, 214 in the affirmative, zero in the negative, one abstention that takes us to Article 24. Let's see, Mr. Feeney, do you want to introduce that? Again, this is in the supplemental Select Board Report as well.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Jim Feeney, Town Manager. Briefly, in the supplemental report for Article 24, revolving fund for 17 Irving Street, the Board, Select Board voted on Friday morning to move that no action be taken on this article. That is because, unlike Article 7, which we spoke about earlier, Article 24 was not placed on the warrant for annual town meeting as a bylaw amendment, and therefore should not be acted upon, because as we discussed before, any amendments to our authorized table of revolving funds do require a commensurate change to Title 1, Article 22, Section 5 of our bylaws. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feeney, and my gratitude for the, to the Select Board for not giving me the opportunity to strike another recommended vote out of order, or out of scope. So, we, I didn't open the speaker queue, we can open the speaker queue, but the only thing that would be in order is a narrow set of motions that could be made, because with a recommended vote of no action in front of us, there's nothing to debate. Motions could change that through, like, a substitute motion, for instance, and there are other things that you could do that I'm not going to enumerate, because it's not worth the meeting's time, but, so let's show and then clear the speaker queue in case anyone has any motions they'd like to make, because debate at this point, there is no scope for debate because we have a no-action recommendation in front of us. And seeing no speakers, and there are no other motions, we'll just proceed to a voice vote on this. So for no action, you could vote either way, but we're not going to do anything either way. So it's kind of in everyone's best interest if you just say yes to no action, because saying no to no action doesn't mean that we do anything, so. So I'm going to take a voice vote on the main motion of Article 24, which is no action. All those in favor of no action say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed say no.
Yes!
Of course, and it is a majority vote to do nothing. Thank you. Okay, so that takes us to Article 25. Let's see, and I believe the Redevelopment Board Chair is not with us tonight, and so I believe we have either, we have someone else from the Select Board, Mr. Revellak, to introduce the Article 25. Thank you. Before he starts, let's just show the speaker queue. And let's see, let's clear that, so everyone's on an even playing field, and it is now open. Mr. Revellak, go ahead.
Okay, and could I ask that the slides for Article 25 be shown, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, the slides for Article 25.
Very good. Good evening, I'm Steve Revellak and a member of the Arlington Redevelopment Board, and I'll be taking you through Article 25, Accessory Dwelling Units. The ARB voted unanimous support for this article. Next slide. So last year, Massachusetts passed the Affordable Homes Act, which includes provisions for encouraging the production of accessory dwelling units throughout the Commonwealth. One of the goals is to increase housing options for households at all income levels and at all stages of life. Arlington adopted a local ADU bylaw in 2021, and Article 25 is generally about bringing Arlington's bylaw into compliance with new state requirements. Next slide, please. So the, this is a summary of the changes proposed by Article 25. First, there is, would be a change to the definition of gross floor area, so that it's measured from the interior side of exterior walls. This is to match a definition put out by the Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities. There's to be some changes to the purpose statement. ADUs have been subject so far to Arlington's large addition regulations, a requirement to obtain a special permit when adding 750 square feet or more outside of an existing building footprint. ADUs would no longer be subject to this provision. The existing ADU bylaw allows one ADU per principal dwelling unit by right in conjunction with a single or two-family home. So, two-family home, you could do two ADUs by right. With the changes to state law, the second ADU will now require a special permit. So ADUs had been subject to a six-foot setback. Article 25 would subject them to setback requirements of the underlying zoning district, and the existing bylaw has an owner occupancy requirement which state law no longer allows. Finally, we're correcting a citation. So, next slide, please. Okay, so the implementing text for these changes, next slide. So these are the definition changes. As I noted earlier, the state requires us to measure gross floor area from the interior side of exterior walls, rather from the exterior side as our bylaw does. Slides, next slide. Okay, and these are the changes to the purpose statement. State regulations prohibit municipalities from having a local preference in their ADU bylaws, so we've taken out language that mentions Arlington specifically, and we've updated the purpose statement to be more in line with what we believe the state is looking for. Next slide. Some changes to the requirements around ADUs. The existing bylaw allows one ADU by right for a single-family home and up to two ADUs by right for a two-family. So Article 25 will allow one ADU per principal dwelling up to a maximum of two. The first ADU would be allowed by right, and the second would require a special permit, and this is a requirement of state regulations. So space for an ADU would no longer be subject to the large addition provision in the bylaw, and this comes from a state requirement that attached and detached ADUs be treated equally. So next slide. Here are the changes to the setback requirements. The current bylaw requires a special permit for ADUs within six feet of a lot line. Article 25 proposes making that applicable when an ADU is built inside the required setback for accessory structures. For most zoning districts, in particular R0 through R2, there is a six-foot setback requirement, but other districts have different ones. For example, R6 has a 10-foot setback requirement. For this reason, the Redevelopment Board believes that the Evans Amendment is duplicative and creates a gray area when the accessory dwelling, or the accessory structure setback is something different than six feet. Next slide. Finally, here is a change to reflect the section of the bylaw which deals with nonconformities, and this reflects the requirement that ADUs be allowed in any district where single-family homes are allowed and may not necessarily be built in conjunction with a single or two-family dwelling. And since this is up, Mr. Moderator, I believe we, I would like to ask for an administrative correction. Under the, in the second line of text, under the group of three lines that are stricken out, said accessory, shall not cause, let me get the paper where I have it written down.
Yeah, I believe this is the same correction that Mr. Loretta pointed out over email. I don't know where Mr. Loretta is sitting, but...
Yes, this is the same correction that Mr. Loretta pointed out in, over email. So in the section, in item, under bullet point, or paragraph D, the Article 25 proposes striking the text within an existing single-family dwelling, two-family dwelling, or duplex dwelling, or within an existing accessory structure building on the same lot as any such dwelling. Now, the next part continues, "does not increase or affect the nonconforming nature of said existing dwelling," and the administrative correction would change the word "said" to the word "and." You know, the part being stricken out before sort of makes "said" not make a lot of sense. And we appreciate Mr. Loretta's bringing that to our attention, and thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Is that text appearing on the slide right now? Can we highlight that?
Yes, that word "said."
Yes, "said," so the point is "said" is referring to an entity that's been stricken and is now kind of a dangling reference that...
Correct.
Is meaningless, and so changing "said" to, what was your?
"An."
"An," like AN, the article.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, we can make that administratively.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. So, okay, let's go to the speaker queue now, let's show that, and first up, we have James Fleming, and then Patrick Hanlon.
Point of order?
Point of order, Mr. Gersh?
Is there an amendment?
We're making that change administratively.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Evans Amendment. Let's see, was this, now I don't have it in my notes here. Maybe I just, I apologize if I failed to put that in. Evans Amendment. Let me just go to the annotated warrant. Yes, you are correct. I just failed to have that in my spreadsheet. So, we'll now call it Winell Evans. My apologies to present her amendment.
Winell Evans, Precinct 14. Article 25 amends our ADU bylaw to allow ADUs with zero side and rear setbacks by right in certain circumstances, including in existing garages if the footprint and the height are not increased. Garages are already allowed with a zero-foot setback as they weren't originally intended to also be dwelling units, and examples are fairly common throughout town. This amendment would not affect the conversion of existing garages, as provided for in Section 8.1.3D, but would simply maintain the current required setbacks for other accessory structures by requiring newly-built accessory structures to have setbacks of six feet. Our Department of Planning and Community Development met with members of the ARB, the ZBA, Town Council, and Inspection Services in early January of this year. According to the minutes from that meeting, quote, "The consensus among the group is there are no safety or logistical reasons to require an ADU to be set back six feet from a property line," unquote. But an ADU on the lot line presents a significant imposition on an abutting property, especially given the nonconforming nature of many parcels in town where an abutter may already have shallow setbacks. If unamended, Article 25 would allow a two-story structure on the lot line with minimal or possibly no windows on that side per the state fire code, blocking sunlight illuminated at night with activity that's a lot more frequent, varied, and noisy than a garage might entail. ADUs on lot lines could also present a significant fire hazard to an abutting home, especially those with shallow setbacks. State law allows communities to reasonably regulate ADUs, including in regard to setbacks. Requiring some minimal setback for all newly-built ADUs seems entirely reasonable, both for safety and for the continued privacy and enjoyment of their property by abutters. This amendment adds to Section 5.10.2. B1E the words, "and is not within six feet of the lot line, after, in the district in which it is located," so that that section shall now read, quote, "An accessory dwelling unit may be located in (1) the same building as the principal dwelling unit or as an expansion to such building; (2) a building that is attached to the principal dwelling unit; or (3) an accessory building that conforms to the setback requirements of this bylaw for accessory structures in the district in which it is located and is not within six feet of the lot line. I move the Evans Amendment to Article 25 and ask for your vote in support of this commonsense amendment. Thank you."
Okay, we have a motion to amend. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Okay, the Evans Amendment is now before us as well as the main motion. Okay, so now we will go to the speaker queue in James Fleming and then Patrick Hanlon. Apologies again to Ms. Evans.
James Fleming, Precinct 4. Mr. Moderator, I have a question. Is it possible to build a garage on the lot line now that is two stories?
Uh, let's see, there's someone from the redevelopment board, perhaps Mr. Revlack have an answer to that?
Mr. Champ?
Uh, Mr. Champ is here?
Mike Champ, Director of Inspection Services. Yes, it is possible to build a two-story detached...
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Yes, it is possible to build a two-story detached accessory structure right up to the property line if it's a garage.
Okay, so it sounds like then what this would do is you can build a two-story garage, but you just can't have it be a place for someone to live. So you could impose on your neighbors regardless. And then, Mr. Moderator, a question. The, the presentation that we saw talked about a, a legal gray area. I was wondering if we can get more detail on what that looks like.
Either Mr. Revlack or...
Sure, so the, the gray area I see with the Evans Amendment, so it would take, you know, there were a list, so Section B1E lists places where you can build an ADU. You know, the same building, a building that is attached, and an accessory building. And the Evans Amendment would add, you know, a requirement that be, that the accessory building be allowed six feet from the property line. Now, the place where this, where, where it, you know, we get into a little bit of a conundrum is later in Section E where we read if an accessory building is located within the setback, then such accessory dwelling shall only be allowed if the applicable special permit granting authority acting pursuant to Section 3.3 grants a special permit upon finding, et cetera, et cetera. So you basically have one part of the bylaw saying it must be six feet away, and you have another part of the bylaw saying that, well, it can be within the setback distance, which might be six feet or might not be six feet depending on the district, saying that you, you know, you can't do that.
So basically, the bylaw is, would be in conflict with itself?
It would be an internal inconsistency that, you know, the special permit granting authorities would have to interpret.
And the state would not like it if we had that?
Presumably not, but I cannot speak for the state.
Okay. I guess another question, Mr. Moderator, that I have is if you have a garage there today, I should, sorry, never mind, that question was answered for us. Would this apply to, only to new buildings that are on a lot, that are being built on the lot line as, that proposed as an ADU?
I think the question is about kind of existing nonconforming, if this...
No, 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 sorry, this would be, would this only apply, the question is would this only apply to brand-new construction on the lot line versus, say, taking an existing garage on the lot line and, and making it into an ADU?
Mr. Revlack or Mr. Champ?
Uh, converting an existing garage to an ADU that was within the setback would require a special permit under...
But the amendment that Winell proposed would not change that?
Uh, it would not, no.
Okay, so this is really about new construction, whether you can build an ADU on the lot line versus not being able to, versus having, having it need to be six feet away?
The, the general gist is if you're building a new ADU, you will have to be six foot away or you will have to seek a special permit. And there are some requirements, you know, in B1E about what the special, the finding that the special permit granting authority has to make, but...
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay, thank, thank you.
It's, it's essentially, you know, pretty much the same as we have today in the sense that if it's, if, if you have, if you meet the required setback, you could do it by right. Otherwise, would require a special permit, and our belief is that, you know, the special permit requirement within a setback would count as a reasonable dimensional regulation with respect to these regulations promulgated for accessory dwelling units.
Gotcha, that's very helpful, thank you. I think my urging would be that you vote against the amendment, and the reason is that a six-foot setback can be pretty difficult to achieve. A lot of the lots in town are small, and an ADU is an extremely valuable tool if you really, really have the need for it. If you've ever been someone who has to put a family member in assisted living, you know how expensive that is. If you can keep them at home in an ADU on the lot, you save so much money. Yes, an ADU costs a lot to build. It is absolutely dwarfed by the cost of putting someone in assisted living. This would make it, in some cases, much harder for you to take advantage of that tool and keep your family in good financial shape. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Hanlon, and then followed by JP Lewicki.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Patrick Hanlon in Precinct 5. I have a question. I'd like to start with Mr. Champ if, if he'd be available.
What's the, the question for Mr. Champ?
Mr. Champ, do you have any general estimate over the last several years when we've had the ADU bylaw? Do you have any estimate about how many ADUs have actually been permitted in the last several years since we've had the existing bylaw?
We currently have 15 either built, being built, or under review. I think there's three under review right now, applications.
And do you have a sense of how many of those were built within six feet of a lot line?
There were at least five that were built less than six feet from the property line through special permit.
And lots of garages are within six feet of the lot line, and there are requirements for that having to do with fires. Sometimes those same requirements under the current bylaw don't apply to, to ADUs necessarily. Do you have a sense of whether having a structure, a garage structure on the, on the lot line as opposed to something used as an ADU is more or less dangerous from the fire control perspective?
Excuse me. Obviously, a garage poses a greater danger because of, you know, because if a car were to go on fire. And the construction of, of new buildings is, you know, there's more fire protection, but I think that the real, the issue that could come into play would be if two ADUs were built next to each other on adjacent properties. But however, that, you know, the building code covers that. There's fire ratings for the walls, all the way up to, they could be required to be sprinkled.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Colleagues, I have been serving on the zoning board of appeals and have been the, on the permit granting authority for ADUs since the inception. The only authority that we have is to grant special, special permits for ADUs which are built within six feet of a lot line. And we've had about six or seven cases that have involved that over the last three years. The notion somehow that ADUs are this wave of things that are going to happen is really not true. We're talking about roughly five a year. And a large portion of those are cases that have come through our board. And I'm speaking now solely as an individual and not as a representative of the board. But a great deal, anything that would essentially restrict ADUs from being built within six feet of a lot line is likely to have a very large impact on the total amount of ADUs that can be provided. And why is that true? Well, partly it's true because many ADUs are being built in garages or being converted from garages to ADUs uses. And garages, for historical reasons in Arlington, are frequently within six feet of a lot line. So you can't use the garage as the basis for the ADU without, and what's been happening so up to now, getting a special permit largely from the zoning board of appeals. On occasion, a new building is built within six feet of a lot line, and you may say, well, what's, why should we allow that? And I would like just to suggest to you, part of the reason is that if you have lots and lots of buildings that are right next to a lot line, and the standard for a garage, changing that to an ADU is whether it's substantially more detrimental to the community than the, than the garage use would be. Generally speaking, your brand-new use, your brand-new building is going to be much more, much more hygienic, much more attractive to the community, much better situated for the ADUs than to the reconversion of the garage. And if the garage is okay, why shouldn't a new building be? And that brings me down to, there's been one ADU in Arlington that has probably been the poster case statewide of how well you can do it. And that's the Housing Corporation of Arlington's ADU that was built behind a two-family unit on Dorothy, Dorothy Road. That is a completely energy, no fossil fuel, completely energy-efficient unit that has been built as an ADU, is rented out. Many of us have gone to the opening of that and have gone through and marveled at what of an extraordinary building that was. That building is three feet from a lot line. That building couldn't have been built under the amendment that we have before us. Now, it seems to me that we've done okay with dealing with these things. It's suitable for Arlington to be able to have the options of building ADUs within six feet of a lot line. If it has to be done by a special permit, that would probably be okay. I can say that while occasionally there have been controversies, although very rarely have there been controversies over proposals to build ADUs, I can only remember one where the issue had anything to do with how close it was to the lot line. Almost always the issue has to do with either some other technicality, like where you can put your parking and so forth, that we deal with every day and, and we just, we just do. And some had to do in general with the sense that ADUs were, that meeting got it all wrong in allowing ADUs to begin with. But specifically looking at the lot line issue and saying it's too close to the lot line has been very, very rare. So if you do the, if we do the amendment, we are likely to have a very serious negative impact on providing ADUs in our town. And if we don't do it, we'll basically continue with the situation that we have now, which has been successful, which has produced a certain number of ADUs, which has done so without undue controversy, and which has produced some fabulous successes that just underscore the position that we have had for the last five years of being in the forefront of advances and progress on ADUs. And I would hate with, to have the opportunity, have the opportunity that's given to us now to be a reason to be on the leader of the retreat. I think we should just keep going forward and at least follow the ADU recommendation. Bye-bye.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're taking JP Lewicki next, and then after that Carl Wagner. But before we take Mr. Lewicki, I think there's another typo that we haven't caught yet. If we could bring up the, let's see, the article in the annotated, Article 25 in the annotated warrant, and if you search on the page for the text "district in which," which should match one occurrence. Can we show that on the display, please? This is also text that's cited in the Evans Amendment. Unless my brain is stuck parsing this the wrong way, I believe that's supposed, and Mr. Revlack, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that's supposed to say "district in which it is located," not "is it located." Is that correct?
I believe you are correct, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, so we'll make that change administratively. That also applies to the Evans Amendment, which copies that same text. It correctly copies the incorrect text, so we will make that correct in both the amendment and the main motion. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Lewicki, sorry for the interjection.
JP Lewicki, Precinct 2. Mr. Moderator, I have a few questions. I guess my first one is, have there been any cases at all where two separate ADUs have been built for a two-family house?
Any cases where they have been built? Mr. Champ, do you have an answer to that question?
Mike Champ, Director of Inspection Services. There have not.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions on the existing setbacks. Because I think it's a little confusing, okay, you've got the, it's gotta be, now it has to be within the setback versus the six feet from the existing thing. So I just wanted to clarify, what are the existing rear and side setbacks for R zero, R one, and R two? Mr. Revlack, do you have that memorized from the ZBL?
Yes. In the R zero, R one, and R two, and also R three, R four, and R five districts, there, the setback requirement for an accessory structure is six feet, both rear yard and side yard.
Okay, great. So that, that part's not really changing from the existing bylaw. We're, we're changing the language, but it's essentially staying the same. And just to make sure I've got it right, under both the existing law and the new one, anything that's right up to the lot line, it's still gonna have to go through the special permit process. They're still gonna be able to get fire safety, all of that. I guess maybe more rhetorical, because I think it's already been answered. But I guess I would just encourage you to vote against the amendment. I think, like many of you, I'm not, I have no current plans to build an ADU, but it's very nice to have as a potential option. If your mother-in-law or a parent gets sick and you're gonna be caring for them, if your, your children grow up and are living on their own and aren't gonna be able to afford a new home in Arlington, the idea that you might be able to provide a separate room that they can live in and have a little independence while, while still saying close to family. I think it's great that Arlington adopted a kind of pioneering accessory dwelling unit bylaw back in 2021, and I think it's great that the state has adopted, adopted that. And so I'm, I'm looking forward to us updating it to match the state law. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take Carl Wagner next, and then after that Vincent Bodwan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Carl Wagner, Precinct 15. I'm having a lot of trouble hearing people on the microphones tonight, so I will try to be clear, and I hope you can hear me not too loud and not too softly. I, I'm rising to support the logical idea that we go, now that Massachusetts law supports ADUs, we also go to ADUs. It makes sense. We already basically approved it in '21, and this is not an administrative change. This is a change that brings us back towards what Massachusetts law would be. However, it is deficient in one major thing. I think the town, you deserve that the town should have given you comparisons between what Mass law now is and what Arlington law will be, or what Arlington law is. There was a chart up there at one point, and that was between Arlington now and Arlington proposed. But there are important differences even after we vote tonight, and we will certainly vote tonight to either approve it without the six-foot prevention from the lot line or, or with. So I, I think it's very important to have had better information. For example, the state strongly suggests that you do not let ADUs go within 10 feet of zero feet. Earlier, a speaker said that that's not the case. It's absolutely true that the state suggests that our communities in Massachusetts not have ADUs within 10 feet. So I think it makes a lot of good sense for us to support the Evans Amendment, to, to go to six as a, a limit. Another thing, Arlington hasn't solved parking for ADUs. The state has logical rules in there. Both the state and Arlington allow you to go up to two and a half stories wherever you put that ADU. That's 32 feet probably, and that's something to think about. There are other differences, too, and it's important that we know them. Arlingtonresidentsarfor.org did a chart, but, you know, you're not gonna see it here tonight, and the town didn't give it to you. So I'm, I'm frustrated that we are not giving ourselves the benefit of knowing the full difference, the full delta between state law and Arlington. And I would ask that in a future session, next year, we, we work to bring Arlington law better into agreement with what state law is. So I ask you, please, think about six feet. It's the difference between them on fire and my property here, or vice versa. Six feet is not a lot of feet, and I ask you to vote in the logical amendment protection of having an ADU 32 feet high, six feet away from the lot line. Thank you.
Okay, we'll take Vincent Bodwan next, and then David Preitzer.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Vincent Bodwan, Precinct 1. First of all, I'd just like to thank the folks in the town who have spent the time putting this together. I know it's been a lot of work to get us in conformance with state law. I think we can be proud to have an ADU bylaw that is already very close to what the state law now requires. In fact, in many ways, it goes beyond it, and yet, as we've heard, we've had a very modest amount... of construction happen. So I, I think these changes are good. I, I will be voting against the amendment. I think there's some confusion that we're trying to use the zoning bylaw to deal with issues like fire safety that are extremely robustly covered by the building code. And I don't think we want to deprive ourselves of the opportunity for many of the structures here in Arlington that have a garage, that that might be converted into an ADU. So, you know, the fire protection is there. So I will be voting in support of the main motion and against the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take David Pretzer next, and then Michael Ruderman.
I move to terminate debate on this article and all matters before it.
Okay, we have a motion to terminate debate on all matters under Article 25, and a second. We have a second. All those in favor of terminating debate under Article 25, say yes?
Yes!
All those opposed, say no?
No!
It is a two-thirds vote. Debate is terminated. So we will now move to a vote on, we will open after I describe it, the vote on the Evans Amendment first. This would amend the main motion's text in Section 5 dot 10 dot 2B1E, as in Evans, by adding the text, quote, "and is not within six feet of the lot line," end quote, at the end of the, of the clause in the first sentence of that section. So let's open voting now on the Evans Amendment to amend the main motion. Okay, voting is open. If you're in favor of making that amendment to the main motion, press 1 for yes. If you're opposed, press 2 for no, or 3 to abstain. Five seconds to get your vote in. Okay, let's close voting. And the amendment fails. 72 in the affirmative, 137 in the negative, three abstentions. That takes us to a vote on the main motion before we open voting. This vote seeks to amend Section 6.1 of the zoning bylaw to add an exception for, I'm sorry, this is, that's 26, sorry about that. This would amend the zoning bylaw in, in the following sections, in three sections. Section 2, definitions of ADU and gross floor area. I'm not gonna go through all the details, but just enumerate the sections. Section 5 dot 10 dot 2, accessory dwelling units, too many changes to summarize accurately here. Section 8.1.3, non-conforming single-family and two-family dwellings, to strike some text within there and a bullet point. And so that is the main motion that we are now about to vote on. So let's bring up a vote now on the main motion, which is the recommended vote of the redevelopment board. If you're in favor of that.
Mr. Moderator?
Yeah, so, point of order from balcony, yeah?
Yes.
If it's short, I can repeat it through my microphone, yeah.
So 72 divided by 137 plus 72 is 34 percent. It's not deserved.
Amendment is always majority. An amendment of the main motion is always majority. The main motion in this case happens to be amendment to the zoning bylaw, which follows different rules. Okay, okay.
I had to try to set that to the table.
Okay, I'll try to be more clear about that when we take the amendments. I know that's confusing. And the, let's see, voting is still open, and this is on the main motion, and it is a majority vote. Oh, what?
Majority.
It is majority, yes.
It's a majority.
It was, it was listed as majority in my notes, and Mr. Cunningham, Town Council, is confirming that it's majority vote. That is what we discussed before. And also, yeah. And also in consultation with the redevelopment board chair. Do you want to say something to that? Let's see, voting open, but Mr. Cunningham will address this, perhaps to clarify why this is majority as opposed to two-thirds.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Cunningham, Town Council, and the body's correct. Typically, zoning bylaws are subject to a two-thirds vote, but pursuant to amendments to the statute 48, Section 5, that were made back in 2020, some votes in certain circumstances were reduced to a majority vote. This is one of those circumstances.
Okay, so voting is still open, and this is a majority vote on the main motion under Article 25. Okay, let's close, let's close voting. And the motion passes 188 in the affirmative, 21 in the negative, and three abstentions. Okay, that takes us to Article 26. Can we show the speaker queue before we take speakers? Okay, and once this gets cleared and this list becomes empty, then the speaker queue will be open for Article 26. Okay. Mr. Revlack, do you want to lead us off?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. May I request that these slides for Article 26 be shown?
Okay.
Thank you. Hello, I am Steve Revlack, a member of the Arlington Redevelopment Board. I'll be taking you through Article 26, Transportation Demand Management Plan. The ARB voted favorable action on this article by a vote of five to nothing. Next slide, please. So the zoning bylaw allows the ZBA, Zoning Board of Appeals, or the Arlington Redevelopment Board is applicable, to reduce minimum parking requirements when an applicant submits a transportation demand management plan, or a TDM plan, that incorporates at least three strategies that are listed in Section 6.1.5. C. The goal is to provide accommodations for forms of transportation other than personal automobiles. So we have found that smaller projects have had difficulty meeting these requirements. And Article 26 would allow smaller projects, specifically those with less than 10 residential units and less than 3,000 square feet of commercial space, to provide two measures instead of three. This article also proposes to add two new TDM strategies. One would be providing electric charging stations for bicycles and scooters, and the other would be being in close proximity to a subway station or a bus stop with frequent service. Practically speaking, this would be along the 77 bus route. Next slide, please. Okay, so here are the, I'll, here are the textual details of the article. Next slide. Here we, we see some wording changes and the provision that would allow smaller projects, 10 or fewer units and less than 3,000 square feet of commercial space, to comply by providing two TDM measures. Next slide. And here are the two additional TDM measures proposed by Article 26, to provide charging stations and proximity to transit, specifically being within a quarter mile of a subway station or bus stop that has a 30-minute service or better seven days a week. And in Arlington, the 77 buses, the, the only bus that meets that requirement. We are, the, earlier tonight at its meeting, the redevelopment board discussed the amendment to Article 26 submitted by Mr. Boudouin, and we, the board voted to support it four to zero. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Great, thank you. And we have an amendment that was submitted in advance, the Boudouin amendment. So Vincent Boudouin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Vincent Boudouin, Precinct 1. I move my amendment to Article 26 as posted to the annotated warrant.
Okay, we have a second. It is now before us. Go ahead.
So just to briefly explain why I'm submitting this, I had submitted a separate warrant, Article 37, that included this proposed change as well as other more extensive changes to the bylaw. And after discussion with the redevelopment board, they recommended a no vote on the overall article, but we're in support of this particular change. So rather than waste your time with another entire article, I am submitting the amendment. Cargo bicycles are an important transportation option for some families. They allow people to carry children, groceries, household items, and in some cases, they can be a replacement for trips that could be made, would otherwise have to be made by car. So they're a great option to have, but they require more storage space than typical bicycles. So this is a simple change. It doesn't provide detail on the size of parking space that the bicycle would need, because that would all be worked out in the details of the Transportation Demand Management Plan. It would be submitted by the builder or the homeowner and reviewed by the redevelopment board. So I appreciate your support, and if you have any questions, I'm certainly happy to answer them, but I believe the redevelopment board is also available. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it. Let's show the speaker queue, and we'll first take Adam Oster, and then Ratnacar Valanke.
Pass.
Ratnacar Valanke was also passed. James Fleming?
Pass.
And then Sam Polk?
Pass.
And John Warden?
Pass.
I hear if you get five passes in a row, it terminates debate. Just kidding.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Is this, is this thing working?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Good. John Warden, Precinct 8. You mentioned that you, you can cut back the number of parking places if there's frequent bus service. And then you said, frequent means every, every 30 minutes? I don't know. That, that doesn't strike me as frequent. And, and as someone who can no longer drive, so is much more dependent on bus service, I can tell you that it's often more than 30 minutes to, to wait for one of those buses. When I was waiting one on today, for example, it just went right by me. I was standing right under the T sign that said bus stop. He just kept going. So that, so I don't know when the next one's coming along, because I took, took a 350, which happened to come along. And, and the, and it's really, people who are dependent on the public transportation, it used to be fairly good. And I commuted to Boston for 57 years to my law office, and I could get there usually under an hour. Now, I don't know how long it would take. I'd take an Uber. And, and it's, it's just, I, I don't, I, I think you really want to think well on depending on the MBTA to give you what you call frequent service. And I, I don't think anyone who stood up, particularly in the winter, you stand out there for 30 minutes to wait for a bus, and you call that frequent? I don't think so. So I, I, I think you need to, to adjust, adjust that to make it more reasonable for people who are dependent on the public, so-called public transportation system. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed Tremblay, and then Mark Kepline.
Ed Tremblay, Precinct 19. None of my comments this evening or, or on this article would apply to Mr. Revlack, since, I actually have a lot of respect for Mr. Revlack, because he practices what he preaches. When I'm out plowing snow, I see him riding his bike. So he rides his bike year-round, regardless of the weather. And, and I really respect him for that. However, I've, I've got to see the Arlington Housing Corporation, the results of the Arlington Housing Corporation project on the, up by Downing Square. And, you know, I had conversations with the previous director when they were planning that, and she was telling me about the demand traffic management plan and how nobody was gonna own a car there, because they were deeded, no-car apartments, and, 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 and everybody was gonna take the T and ride their bikes. But I can tell you, if you think about it, this may be four months out of the year, it's kind of cold, and, and from working right next to the, the bike path, I can tell you, there's not a whole lot of traffic on the bike path from November to maybe February. And then, I think it's probably fair to say that there's, there's probably 60 days of rain when there's not a whole lot of traffic on the bike path. So here we are, planning a reduction in parking spaces when for half the year, with the exception of Mr. Revlack, not too many people are riding their bikes or taking the bus. And so I, I would, I would urge caution on, on really depending on, on riding your bike and taking the bus. And because, as, as we know now, by just driving down Lowell Street at night, all those parking spaces that didn't get built, it, for the Downing Square project, are now parked on Lowell Street. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we were, we're quickly approaching 11 o'clock. Mr. Kepline, I just asked, before you say anything, and, and do you intend to terminate debate? Because...
No, I have a quick, couple of quick comments.
Okay, I just want folks to get, like, antsy and then not give you the time that you deserve to, the attention that you deserve. So we could adjourn if you wanted more time to use your seven minutes, so.
I'll be quick.
Okay, go ahead.
Mark Kepline, Mark Kepline, Precinct 9. I'm gonna echo something that Ed just mentioned about parking. And many of you might know that the difficulties at the Russian School of Mathematics located on Mill Street. It's located right on the bike path, and yet, all these students coming and going to that facility, that commercial property, almost none use the bike path. They're, they're in cars, and there's not enough parking by shaddocks, and it causes a big headache. So there's, there's a reality gap here. So the reality is that, that bikes aren't nearly as, as embraced as people would hope. So there is a need for more vehicle parking. My second concern is the charging facilities for scooters. Now, there are many horrific stories in the news about a scooter fire within a dwelling, and an entire apartment building becomes uninhabitable as a result of a fire. And I'm wondering if there's any specific regulations on, or standardization of scooter charging that will be applied here?
Mr. Feeney or Mr. Revlack?
Steve Revlack, Arlington Redevelopment Board. The idea behind providing charging station is that it would be in a bicycle room or a scooter, a room for the storage, dedicated to long-term storage of bicycles or scooters. And therefore, the charging would be done in a separate room rather than in a, apart, in someone's individual apartment.
All right. Is that a fireproof room?
I will leave that to Mr. Champa.
Mr. Champa?
Mike Champa, Director of Inspeccional Services. It's actually more of a question for the fire department, but I would imagine that with the number of bikes that would be in the room, there would be some type of fire protection required.
All right. Is there a standard for charging of scooters? I know there isn't one for cars. There's like several standards that are competing.
No, the standards that we would know of would be for the, the batteries that actually run the...
Yeah, I mean, how many volts and amps do the, you know, do they require?
It's the, it's lithium batteries that...
All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So we are at 11 o'clock, but let's see, Mr. Jalcutt, if...
Mr. Garg?
Well, hold on. Before we, before I recognize that motion, if, Mr. Jalcutt, if you're gonna move to terminate debate, and if it's the will of the meeting to terminate debate, I think that'd be to the benefit of the meeting, because it'll, it'll be some time, because we have budgets coming up on Wednesday to continue this debate. So I'm not...
Point of order.
Point of order, Mr. Foskett?
Sir, you can't, you're demanding to terminate debate.
I'm, I'm not demanding anything. I'm trying to get the meeting to where the meeting is trying to go, whether that's to continue debate after budgets, or to take a vote now with everyone here. Okay.
Terrible.
Okay. Thank you for the input, Mr. Foskett. I disagree. Mr. Jalcutt, if you intended to move to terminate debate, I would recognize that motion at this point, or otherwise we could adjourn and continue this debate after the budgets.
Daniel Jalcutt, Precinct 6. I move to terminate debate.
Okay, do we have a, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of terminating debate under Article 26, say yes. All those in favor of terminating debate under Article 26, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
It is not terminated. I would now recognize motion to adjourn.
No.
Well, there are, the voice vote is challenged, there are more than five standing. We'll take electronic vote on terminating debate. And let's make sure we're keeping the speaker queue. I'll take a picture, take a picture just in case. Okay, voting is now open to terminate, if you want to terminate debate, press 1 for yes. If you want to continue debate at a later time, press 2 for no, or 3 to abstain. This is a two-thirds vote. Okay, it's closed voting. And the motion fails, 128 in the affirmative, 69 in the negative, three abstentions. It's close to two-thirds, but it is not two-thirds. Now entertain a motion to, do you have motion? To reconsider, reconsideration of the termination of debate?
No, before we...
Oh, before we, okay. Yeah, we have a notice of reconsideration for Article 25, correct, Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Okay. Loretta, on which article?
25.
25 as well, okay.
Chris Loretta.
And Klein, Chris Loretta and Christian Klein, notice of reconsideration on 25.
Adjourn.
Okay, we now have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Yes.
All those in favor of adjourning, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, say no. It is unanimous, we are adjourned. We'll see you Wednesday night with Town Budgets.